This conference will now be recorded.
I'm not gonna start over. What? No, we do that in the regular meeting.
Uh...
I've read the packet for the...
Yeah.
So...
Which packet?
Yeah, which packet? Are we doing it? This is...
Just the Love Edition.
Yeah, I'm gonna make sure everyone's got a...
I don't have that.
I don't have that.
Is it in your...
It's in your packet. No, it's about 20 pages.
Is it in, uh...
It's the same stuff from online, right?
Yeah, from one Alex's, a while ago.
I just wanna make sure everyone has their... Give him just a second. It seemed pretty straightforward. We'll let Alex talk a little bit, but we'll look at the conditions and then we can look and see if there's any public comment and anything that you guys would like to add in addition to what Alex and his group have put together.
We saw that she was on the very last page.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I need a second. We could just go over it really quickly. We're treating Alex from county planning.
So, I think what I'd like to do is actually ask you first if y'all have the same.
Yes.
Excitement. Is that what you did?
Good, we did, yeah.
Yes.
So, with our role with Madison County and the town of Ennis, again, similar to some of the recent files that we've worked on with the town, there is an air move or agreement in place between the town of Ennis and Madison County whereby Planning Board for the county serves as Planning Board for the town. And as such, a conditional use permit, as it's required in the town of Ennis zoning regulations, it requires review that includes review by the Planning Board and the Planning Board forms a recommendation to the town. So, for the review of the Planning Board, I did prepare a staff report. I think you all have a copy of that, your packet. We coded this project as the Ennis Conditional Use Permit 2102, ECUP 2102. And we refer to it as Clark Avenue Mixed Use Project. Essentially, the request is from Judith Moylan of Moylan and Family Credit Shelter Trust. Judith is here with us tonight. And there's a request for a conditional use permit regarding a mixed-use multi-family residential and commercial project on the subject property. The property is located within the incorporated area of the town of Ennis on the north side of Clark Avenue between Highway 287 and Pearl Street. Thank you. The location is presently zoned as HC Highway Commercial. So, under the Highway Commercial, this is an interesting background for this project, which is essential to grasp. The Highway Commercial, just like the other zoning districts, prescribe minimum setbacks from the front, side, and rear property lines. Right now, the properties are undeveloped. They've never been developed. They were actually established in the 1940s, and it was pursuant to the Love Edition to the town of Ennis. And at the time that they were made, for whatever reason, they were just never built upon. Some of the few tracts that are so connected to the core area of town that haven't been built upon. It's a very interesting place. However, the parcels were made in their current configuration originally back with the original plan, which predated the zoning. And the HC setbacks for the front, side, and rear, if you actually pencil them out, you find that they envelop almost the entire surface area of the property, rendering the properties not able to be reasonably utilized. There is a provision in the zoning regulations that... There's the table in the regulations which have the full intersectional standards. And there is a provision that says for planted properties created prior to the adoption of the regulations, they may be utilized, subject to issuance of a conditional use permit. So, that's one of the key reasons this is coming through as a conditional use permit. The other is that, as I mentioned, it's a mixed-use project. It has a combination of commercial, which is planned on the east and the west side of the block. And on the internal part, there are two residential uses planned. And in the HC district, both single-family and multifamily uses require a conditional use permit. So, that's the nature of why this is coming to review. I guess I'd like to just try to keep this down to the door. I do have a habit of talking a lot.
Not too bad.
So, in a sense, the parcels are recognized as parcels non-conforming by size. And according to Section 11-3-4B, it does say parcels non-conforming by size that were subdivided prior to this title may be used, provided that proposed uses are treated as conditional uses, subject to the conditions set forth for such uses. So, if you go back a couple of months, we did a conditional use permit earlier this season. And in that review, it was recognized that under the current language of the regulations, there's very minimal criteria established for a conditional use permit. As a matter of fact, there's almost no criteria that's particularly qualitative. And that matter is being taken up by the town. We've been coordinating with the county planning office and the town to actually try to establish some meaningful, useful, conditional use permit criteria. That's a separate matter that's being discussed in the midst of a particular tax debate. But as proposed, given the regulations in effect at the time that this application was requested, I've done the best I can, working with the language and the regulations, to perform an evaluation. And essentially, it appears to be a really good proposal of use for a few reasons. The staff report has recognized public comment and agency comments. There was nothing adverse presented by either the general public or any agencies. The properties are just asking to be put to ungood beneficial use. They've sat there since the 1940s, unutilized. The site plan that originally was submitted to us, that you can see in the materials you have, the applicant had to sort of just propose some setbacks from the parcels. And you'll see that the subject property is comprised of several parcels. I believe there's eight. And the concept is to actually, upon issuance of a conditional use permit, the applicant would like to actually reconfigure the parcel slightly and do one aggregation, so that the lots that would be set up would match the site plan that you're looking at. The commercial uses are planned with access onto Clark Ave. and also onto Pearl Street for that westernmost commercial use. If you look at the dimensions of the parking spaces and the driving traffic aisles, they appear to meet the specifications that are established in the zoning regulations for access. There appear to be an adequate number of parking spaces to serve, you know, the future potential commercial uses on those. One of the residences is planned to actually be set up with ADA compliance, so that it could be served serving the purpose for people that might have some kind of physical disabilities or aged occupants. The setbacks that were proposed originally are different from the HC setbacks, because as I said, the HC setbacks were completely enveloped property. It was noted, however, that some of the original setbacks were shorter than any setback established in any of the districts within the zoning regulations. So, we did communicate that in basically an amended site plan that had some markings on it by the applicant was sent here. And that's what we've actually been going on. And this is what you'll see with the red lettering that you have. That's the actual proposed finished setbacks at this time. And I'm gonna get my site plan out real quick. So, the setbacks that would be between the western commercial use and the neighboring residential duplex would be five feet on the sides. The structure of the commercial on the east, the western commercial, has a 13-foot front setback and a seven-foot rear setback. The westernmost residential structure has a 19-foot front setback and a seven-foot rear. The neighboring residential structure, which is also planned as a two-story... That was planned as... They're both duplexes. The one that's the easternmost of the two residential duplexes would be planned to be a two-story with a basement. That one has a 20-foot front setback. And the side setback would be five feet on the left, 5.3 feet on the east. To the east of that second residential duplex are two separate commercial office spaces planned. They both share a common driveway that would come off of Clark Avenue, which is 22 feet width. And each lot has a specific area devoted to parking. You'll notice that on all of these lots, there is some perimeter space that could be utilized for landscaping, creating a buffer, not only from the exterior perimeters of the whole project, but also between the specific uses. Particularly, it's usually relevant and advised to provide some kind of screening mixed with landscaping, such as fencing and some vegetation in between commercial and residential uses. One of the strengths and value of the zoning is that you can try to create some compatibility between different types of uses. The applicant has addressed landscaping verbally in the cover letter, which you all should have in your packet. I think they mean real well to do a good job with their final finished product and their landscaping. The staff report has gone through the criteria for the conditional uses, which frankly is quite minimal under the current language. However, the most useful criterion is looking at compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. Now, when we look at the compliance with the plan, you'll see that on page five of the staff report. And it really actually meets the criteria in a very direct way. If you'd like to look at the specific ways which that meets the plan, you can definitely talk about those. Does anybody have any questions about that? On the commission?
Yeah, and I think Brittany's working on trying to get it...
This is the public hearing on its conditional use.
Yeah.
Let me do that.
I didn't make the agenda. That's what I was waiting for you to do, these other things.
This is published. I guess we could, and we've got time at this point. Let's open it up to public comment first.
See, you parse it out. Okay, I'm used to a meeting where a staff presents, applicant presents, you ask questions, and then you open it to the public comment.
Are we doing that backwards?
No, backwards, it's just different ways to...
I think if Mrs. Moylan and her son would like to say some stuff, because that maybe it answers questions that the public... So, it might answer questions that they already have. So, yeah.
Basically, I think Alex did an excellent job going through this and outlining some of the difficulties that we've had in the past with doing anything with the property, given it was part, originally part of the Sportsman's Lodge. And then when we transferred ownership to the Zane Loos, they were not interested in the extra land, so we just capped it.
Yeah.
And so, then, since my late husband passed away, then I've decided to go ahead and develop the property. And so, we thought the best use would be something that wasn't just hard commercial, that would be offering a mixed use where people might have the opportunity to live and work in their home.
Yeah.
Or, for instance, like, say, someone that was interested in having a commercial park might live next door. The house plans all have office space built into them, so somebody could live at home and work. And then there's the two aged friendly units and then the two more family-oriented units. So, there'd be four townhomes on together in this particular application for the conditional use.
Maybe four?
Well, there's two duplexes, but they'll be with the zero lot line, so there'll be individual...
More individual...
The four individual dwellings.
No, I just appreciate Alex's time, that he's walked us through all the steps in the process. There's a lot to go through. And I appreciate you folks.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? So, let's go ahead and take questions from the commission.
Oh, yeah.
Otherwise, save us some time.
Can I add one more thing, please? Okay, so culminating with the review, there's finding of fact regarding how the local...
Yeah.
Basically, complies with the regulations. And then there is a section of the draft conditions of approval. The staff report drafted 14 conditions of approval. However, the Planning Board, when they consider review, they have four in the recommendation of approval tier. And there's a document that has been provided called the Planning Board Addendum, which is their recommendation. They did agree with the staff evaluation, and they recommended the original staff conditions. However, they've also had some discussion in the meeting, and the Moylanders were involved in that conversation. And it was regarding the potential for creating a pedestrian pathway or sidewalk along Clark Avenue in front of the project. It is a... That is an improvement that would be a real good benefit to the town. It's got some challenges, and I've kind of discussed that on the Planning Board Addendum, under the asterisk portion. These are some things for the town to think about, how to go about tactically coordinating this with the Moylanders. The condition 15 is drafted by the Planning Board. It says the applicant should coordinate with the town of Ennis to establish a sidewalk along the subject property's Clark Avenue frontage between Pearl Street and Highway 287. Some of the challenges with that essentially are that the subject properties, as I mentioned, they're not particularly large. They're utilizing their functional space for the buildings and the project. But there's that area between the property boundary to the actual edge of the street. It's quite, you know, anywhere you find a built environment, you have that.
You're talking about the right of way.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And that's typically not something that a private person goes and puts improvements on just on their own. So, that's something to coordinate with the town. And possibly there'll be some conversation about that. And that's all I have for you.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions for Alex?
I think so. Thank you so much for preparing the staff report and holding the planning board meeting and going through it.
You're welcome.
Yes, this is welcome.
How does something like that work with you?
So, I think we would need to give them permission to build on the right of way.
To build on that instead of...
Yeah. I think, I know you did too. I was on the planning board meeting when it was presented. I think it's a fabulous project. I think it's great use of the land there with the mixed use. I really liked that. I would like to see, especially since, and I applaud you for doing, you know, whether ADA compliance or universal access, that's really how we move forward, and it's great for everybody, you know? So, thank you very much for a very well-thought-out site plan. I guess, I think I did hear you saying, correct me if I'm wrong, in regards to the sidewalk, that you were surprised it wasn't on the site plan? Or are you willing to put this...
Oh, yes, back originally. I wasn't really thinking about how that all came together.
Okay.
And so, I thought, well, maybe it's something that Margaret would have done when she did this, but she didn't do it for a reason, probably, because it's something that is a public works deal, and it's not the private property owner's specific duty. It's just that you have to go and coordinate with the public works on it.
Yeah.
And basically, it boils down to, you know, putting a sidewalk or a curb or anything that channelizes water on the city's property in the right of way, it's gotta go somewhere.
Yeah.
And where is it going?
Yeah.
You know, and that's kind of something that...
Are you okay with doing it if you coordinate with them?
Yeah, so we can coordinate.
That's what I figured.
If it's on the right of way, yeah. Okay, okay.
It's just, you know, as far as slopes and if there's any inlets or anything that needs to be put in or, you know, how it ties into the Pearl Street section.
Yeah.
You know, with the existing curb and gutter that's over there on the other side of the road.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, you know, we don't want to go build something on the town's property that just pours water.
Yeah, and creates a huge lake or whatever. Okay.
This is something that would be an asphalt walk or would it be a...
I guess we can work with that, because on, you know, to the east of the development, that's an asphalt walk there that goes to the Sportsman's. So, I guess we can work with you, work with you there on what would be... It was nice to have it nice and wide.
Maybe you can help too, because you do this. What you think appropriate and how maybe even tie in more. If we have money while he's doing it to connect stuff, there's tons of opportunities.
Yeah, yeah. So, I think, yeah, I think we can work with you, have Kelly work with you on that, if you're open to that, of having it be, you know, at least six feet wide, because then that way, people can pass each other, you know? And I think that is more of...
Right.
Yeah, so, and especially since you're working for the age-specific, when those folks, you know, they want to get out and walk, or maybe they don't have the ability to drive anymore, you know, that really helps them engage in with the community. And with the, you know, I know with the residential stuff there in the north 40, they're gonna want to walk to those businesses that are there. So, that is my only comment, so thank you. I think it's a great project.
You guys did a very good job putting this together.
Yeah, for me, it's a no-brainer. It looks really good.
So, I think our... Do you have any comments? John, do you have any comments?
Yep, I just had one quick question. Under project background and review process, it says the subject property contains eight undeveloped lots.
Yes. It does. It's eight lots that we want to reconfigure.
And reconfiguring to seven.
Into seven. Are these for sale or are you gonna keep them? No, no, we're gonna... Okay, you kind of like operate.
Yeah. And do you, I guess, do you have any elevations or any descriptors of what the exterior will be?
Yeah, we do have some plans that we can give to you guys. I'm seeing structures, but first story structure plan, they're all done. Don't go too far into the design structures without...
Without doing this, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
I would, on these commercial spaces, I guess that would be, I see the parking is there to the north. I would just encourage you to look at design that helps with walkability and not just like a solid surface on theirs or whatever. So, in that way, it's just more inviting, even if there are windows or just a change in architecture there. That really makes it more inviting to walk and more comfortable, as opposed to feeling like you're in an industrial kind of area. Yeah, because that would be...
On Clark.
Yeah, along Clark Avenue to make that, yeah, if it's not like a solid concrete wall, you know? That would be the other, my other comment. So, just to make it attractive from Clark Avenue as well.
What are you guys planning to do with the trees and stuff that are already there? Are you gonna try to eat some of them? Cans. There's a lot of infrastructure that you would kind of get put in, utilities and whatnot.
Right.
Definitely would try to save what we could.
The ones that are healthy.
The ones that are...
You only have to take the dead ones out.
When the property transferred, the water stopped.
Oh, yeah, gotcha. That's a bummer. Yeah. So, okay. All right. So... So, do you have any comments? Do you have any comments? Okay, yeah, I know you're, I know you are on the meeting. Okay, Jason, do you have any more comments?
No.
Okay, so what we first do is, I want to make sure that.
Are we going to make a motion?
The findings of fact and then to conditionally approve it. So, so I move.
No, we can't do that. We're do that in the meeting.
Oh, okay, so this is just the public hearing, so.
Close that part of the public hearing and move to the budget. Public.
Hold on, just one. But go ahead and ask again.
Yeah, if anyone else has another comment on the block four.
I think it's going to be a welcome addition to the camp.
I'm excited you're bringing elderly accessible. I have somebody and she's keeping them that way just because there's a need for it.
Okay, any further comment on the budget? A little comment, then we can go ahead. And open, we'll close the public hearing. Try to Alex and jump in and yell out the procedure. Correct me a lot last time, it was appreciated. But then go ahead and open the commission meeting. Go ahead and start with pledge.
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's go ahead and move to the minutes. We've got two sets of minutes here. The minutes of the August twelfth meeting.
Second.
Second.
Comment, any discussion?
Second. Oh, your second already?
There was no discussion. Hey, call the vote, Jason.
I wasn't here, so I have to stand.
Parker Swup were here. Oh wait, did they miss that? They got you listed here.
I thought you were on, I know.
No, I don't.
I don't think the other one.
No, I don't think he was here. So that obviously.
No, I was not here.
So make that amendment, well, we have to make the amendment to remove him from commission president.
Jason, you want to find out if Jason was here?
I got it.
We need to amend that, that motion or just.
Approved and amended.
Approved as amended, yeah, yeah, or, yeah. It's, yeah, I think, I think we got it.
Okay, so we're going to call.
Make a subsequent motion to amend. To remove my name from the list.
August twelfth minute.
August three?
August twelve.
August twelve.
Second.
Now we'll call the vote.
Well, call the vote on the amendment.
On the amendment.
Aye.
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 Aye. Now, now make a motion to, for the second one.
Well, I think that one's already, it's already amended.
It's still on the floor.
Yeah, so.
So another call and vote.
Then it's another call the vote.
Christie?
Aye.
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 Let's not start it like this. Okay, the minutes belong August twenty fifth meeting.
You were about to count that one, right?
Yes.
I know what I saw on this one. My name's missed up. Okay.
But the Y?
Y, thank you. It's fine.
Fair.
At the end. Christie with an I. No, I'm just letting you know, okay. Christie moves to approve last page.
Second. Any discussion? The discussion, call the vote, Lisa?
Aye.
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 Okay, public comment on non agenda items. Josh, state your name so everyone knows.
Absolutely. My name is Josh Foden. I work for Willie's Distillery. I'm here this evening to introduce a proposed construction project on our property. I've been working pretty closely with Susie Sprout to put together a building permit application package. That would meet the criteria and review process of the TND overlay. So part of that was to draft a TND agreement, which I have here in my hand. I'm not sure that one of these has ever really been drafted before, so I did my best. My understanding is the TND agreement is to describe all the assets, features of the project in works. You also have site plans showing the proposed project, elevations and everything in front of you as well. So what I plan to do this evening is just read through this document that I have and after which I think you'll have a pretty good understanding of what the project is. And if you have any questions after that, we'll be happy to answer them. So a little background, Willie's Distillery is located at three twelve East Main Street, Ennis, Montana, and has been in business for eleven years. Willie's Distillery is a vibrant growing Main Street business and an asset to the town of Venice. People from all over the country come to visit Willie's Distillery specifically. And while they're here in town, they certainly patronize other businesses in Venice and the surrounding area. We feel that Willie's Distillery doesn't feed, does indeed fit the small town western character of Ennis, Montana. We feel that whiskey and whiskey distilling has as rich a history in the west as gold mining and ranching. So let's jump into the project a little bit more. Willie's Distillery proposes to build a sixty foot by a hundred and twenty foot addition to the west side of our existing forty by fifty bourbon barrel aging warehouse. The proposed sixty by one twenty accessory structure addition will be a mixed use structure. The building will have areas for bourbon barrel aging, office space, employee break room, bathroom, supply room, storage room, and a bottling and labeling area. The proposed addition will be situated approximately a hundred and three feet from Main Street and Highway two eighty seven. The building will only slightly be viewable from Main Street and will not negatively impact the overall view. The overall view of Main Street and the small western town feel of Ennis. You know, the building sits pretty far back. It's really not going to be viewable from Main Street. The proposed accessory structure addition is a wood post and frame building built on a concrete slab. The exterior finishes of four feet of twenty nine gauge steel wainscoting and twenty nine gauge steel siding and roofing. The building will have an overall height of twenty four feet at the peak and the color scheme will match the color scheme of the, of our existing forty by fifty bourbon barrel warehouse. That's gray wainscoting, light gray siding, and cocoa brown trim and roofing. So the proposed building will have the same color scheme as our existing barrel warehouse. We, we feel the design and color schemes will result in a sharp looking building that will enhance Willie's Distillery property and a contribution to the community. So we jumped into some of the reviewing of the core commercial residential district zoning. You know, we've been through eleven dash three C dash two, which is the core commercial residential district zoning from the town of Venice zoning regulations. We do feel that the proposed sixty by one twenty addition to our urban barrel aging warehouse fits two of the permitted uses listed in eleven dash three C dash two, section B. We feel our project meets the permitted uses of accessory structures and uses in addition to office space. We also feel that our proposed project is a continuation of existing and the proposed use has been prior established and approved by the town of Venice and therefore should be grandfathered. We understand the town of Venice has interpreted zoning codes in the past and allows breweries and distilleries. Obviously, the town of Venice previously determined that Willie's Distillery did in fact meet the zoning codes of both the TND and the CCR zoning districts. As Willie's Distillery was initially approved for construction by the town of Venice approximately eleven years ago. Willie's Distillery was again approved for construction expansion in twenty fifteen when we gained approval from the town of Venice to build the existing forty by fifty urban barrel aging warehouse on our property. Blazer Enterprises recently purchased three oh eight East Main Street, properly formerly known as the Silver Tip Motel. The proposed sixty by one twenty addition will be built utilizing property from the existing Willie's Distillery lots. That's lot twelve and thirteen, chounding addition to the town of Ennis and the newly acquired properly formerly known as the Silver Tip Motel. That's the east thirty feet, north hundred and seventy feet of lot ten and the north hundred and seventy feet of lot eleven, chounding addition to the town of Ennis. The lots owned by Willie's Distillery and Blazer Enterprises encompass thirty five thousand, six hundred and forty square feet. The proposed sixty by one twenty addition will result in thirty nine percent lot coverage, a landscape area of forty five percent, and seventeen percent concrete and gravel areas. In the future, Willie's Distillery plans to pour concrete over the remaining gravel portions. However, that cost isn't in our budget at this time, but we do plan to do that hopefully this coming spring. Willie's Distillery plans to leave all existing landscaping that does not fall within the footprint of the proposed sixty by one twenty addition. Willie's Distillery plans to maintain all green spaces currently on the property. In the future, Willie's Distillery plans to possibly enhance landscaping with the addition of trees and/or shrubs to the grass area between our current production, office, tasting room building, and the proposed sixty by one twenty addition. At this time, Willie's Distillery and Blazer Enterprises does not plan to eliminate, remove existing property boundaries as part of this project. Susie Sprout, town of Ennis zoning administrator, stated building across property lines is allowed for when the properties have the same owner as per the town of Ennis zoning regulations. Willie's Distillery's existing buildings are currently built across property lines as the town of Ennis zoning regulations allow for such. Willie's Distillery currently has seven on-site parking spots. Those parking spots are for employees only. The reason they're for employees only is they happen to be in areas where we have a lot of production operations happening and eighteen wheelers backing into the property to make deliveries. So it's just not safe to have patrons park back there. However, across the street, just right across the street from three twelve East Main Street, we maintain a parking lot that's right next to K and L Mortuary's and Creamatory. We have fourteen spots there that are available for public, patron, and employee parking. And then, of course, like all other Main Street businesses, our patrons also utilize parking along Main Street, Highway two eighty seven. Pardon me. I have spoken with Chase Dimer. He's a plan reviewer within Montana Department of Labor and Industry. And I also spoke with Skip G. He's the Madison County Building Inspector, Montana Department of Labor and Industry, concerning occupancy rating and fire rating of the proposed building. I was told by Chase and also confirmed with Skip that the International Fire Code, chapter fifty, exempts facilities that house distilled spirits or wine in wooden barrels or cans from, from the provisions of IFC chapter fifty. So that basically means the state of Montana will rate our proposed sixty by one twenty building S one occupancy. S one occupancy allows for twelve thousand square foot areas without sprinkler systems or fire separation. So the proposed addition will not be required to have sprinkler system or fire separation by the state of Montana. So that's a little bit of the overview of the project, you know, what we're proposing to do. I'm going to go through the schedule real quick. So Northwest Energy's been paid a sum of twenty one thousand, six hundred and two dollars and twenty eight cents and they're set to arrive between September twenty seventh and October eighth to remove the existing primary transformer pole from Willie's Distillery property and relocate it to accommodate for this larger sixty by one twenty building. Part of that project is also to install two new lift poles that will relocate the electrical service to the properties of the rear of Willie's Distillery Blazer Enterprises lots. So sometime before October first, Volt Electric's set to arrive to disconnect electrical service from the Silver Tip building so that we can demo them. Madison Propane's set to arrive the first week of October to remove the propane lines and the propane tanks from Silver Tip building for demo. Evan Earthworks is set to arrive between October first and October eleventh to demo the Silver Tips buildings and haul away those materials. Evan, Evan Earthworks is also set to come during that timeframe to dig the footers for the concrete slab and tie into the existing city and water sewer connections. Following that, Chief Troy Construction is set to arrive between October eleventh and October twenty second to do form and finish work for the concrete slab and set seventy two foot trench drain. And then the first week of November, MQS Builders is set to arrive to start construction. And then shortly after that, electrical plumbing and HVAC contractors will be in to do their trades. So then part of this document was to include some public and private improvements. So my take on a public improvement is this project will help allow the town of Ennis to reclaim the sixteen foot alley behind Willie's Distillery located between Main Street, Highway two eighty seven, and East Woodland Street, allowing access to the first responders and residents. Let's see, our sixty by one twenty addition will create additional employment opportunities with Willie's Distillery, thereby increasing community growth through the addition of year-round residence to Ennis. Part of the project is to bury the propane tanks on the property. We feel that's safer and more aesthetically pleasing to the property. And then, of course, we're going to be removing the old Silver Tip buildings, which, you know, in my view are just kind of old and not very pretty. So they'll be gone. So private improvements, you know, as far as we're concerned, we're going to have a new sixty by one twenty addition to our existing forty by fifty barrel warehouse, which allows Willie's Distillery to expand our existing business model. Growing fairly vastly and we need additional space to age products. Also, additional office space created will allow us to hire more employees for a growing Main Street business. So that's my overview of the project. Certainly happy to, you know, answer any questions between myself, Jerry, or Robin. So if you have any. Yes, sir.
No, it's public comment. It's public comment.
Okay.
So it's not a, unfortunately, it's not the format for back and forth questions.
No problem. If you guys have any comments as you're going through this process, please feel free to reach out to me.
Sure, sure.
You can find me at those. Yeah, at this time, I'd also like to request a special meeting prior to the October fourteenth meeting to vote on our project. Really hard to have the timeframe to wait until October fourteenth.
Okay, and normally we're not supposed to do this, but Christian Terrell has a copy of this right now and are working on a plan.
Okay, so, yeah, we'll probably, yeah.
Yes. So we will, we will address that a little bit.
Any free time?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation.
One more comment on the project and just hiring people. We currently have thirty one employees. I don't know if anybody knows that. And we physically can't hire more people because we're out of space. And this will help us, we're anticipating hiring at least five more people in the next two years. And these are full-time, very well-paid, above living wage positions.
Thank you. Any other public comment on non agenda items? Please state your name.
My name's Heather Lowe. I come to a lot of these meetings and I just noticed a little bit of an inconsistency at the last meeting. A lot of talk has been going on about population growth and building, especially in the north forty area. One of the concerns from the community was whether or not we would have infrastructure to connect to all these buildings. And sewage was brought up a lot and water. to connect to all these buildings, and sewage was brought up a lot, and water. And I believe we were reassured that everything had been checked out professionally, sewage was great, we're all good, but however, we're coming up with whether or not we could afford another police officer. There was some other projects that came up from you about things that need to be funded, the library, the rest stop, and then you said sewage. So I was just wondering if sewage is good, how come you mentioned that we might need to spend more money on sewage?
I don't think that I said that.
We might want to check the video, because I was watching online, and you kind of mumbled under your breath that we have some other things that could be paid for with some money. So I would check it before you shake your head at me, because it's gonna be public on YouTube, and I found it really interesting that that inconsistency we talked about.
Don't forget water either. We're okay with water.
Any other public comment on non-agenda items?
Yeah, I got one. I just wanted to know if the meetings are posted at 7:00. From what I've always been told with the county attorney and stuff, even if you get done with conditional use reviews and stuff early, it's still supposed to start at the posted time, I was pretty sure, so that's why we put out legal notices and things for people to start at 7:00.
That may be my fault.
Okay, no, it's fine. I was just wondering.
I posted it immediately.
I saw the J A L E file, so they did do that.
Okay, so that was just different verbiage. Sorry to cancel late on that, because that's why I posted it at 7:00. Sorry, that's, I think some people were confused on that.
No problem. Any other public comment on non-agenda?
Oh, Mayor, I'm Gordon Todd. I'd just like to tell you that I am interested in the city infrastructure and one thing and another that we're gonna be needing. I took the time to get ahold of Kelly Elser, and we took about two hours of his time and went down and toured the whole sewer facility, and he explained to me the changes that had been made in this lagoon system over the years and how it actually processes the effluent from Ennis. Anyway, he said that we're running at about half throttle on that sewer system, that it's, currently we have just about 1,000 people, maybe a few more, and he said it was designed for a city of 2,000 people, which just, I thought was great news. I mean, we're in really good shape as far as our sewage goes. So I know you've got a water issue that you're addressing, so anyway, I was encouraged by the septic, or not the septic, the sewer facility. That's all. Thank you.
Any other comment on non-agenda? Okay, we'll move on from there and go ahead and move on to the more than conditional use application.
So I move to approve the findings of fact from the Madison County Planning Board, letter E, CUP-2102, Clark Avenue, mixed use, Moylanen, block four, love addition to Ennis.
Second. Is that everything that you needed?
Yeah, it's just the finding of facts.
Okay, just make a tree, you have any, thank you, John. Any discussion on this now?
So when we go to make a motion including the sidewalk in there, do we need to do that?
Isn't that part of the findings?
No, that's part of the conditions. We're just looking at the findings of fact are just these two items here, so we can discuss on that further if we want to amend that, so.
So any discussion on findings of fact? Okay, we'll call the vote. I think we're at Corey.
Okay. Aye.
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 Thank you. Now we just need to do the...
Do I do the next one? I move to conditionally approve...
Can you speak louder or take your mask down when you talk? We can't hear you back here, and I imagine online can't hear very well either.
I move to approve, conditionally approve, the conditional use permit, number E, CUP 21-02, Clark Avenue, mixed use, Moylanen, block four, love addition to Ennis, with the conditions provided by the Madison County Planning Board, which I believe that were 15 items, and specifically that in number 15, that the applicant and the town of Ennis should coordinate to establish a sidewalk along the subject property in the right-of-way at least six feet wide, and we will coordinate those efforts.
Can I get a second or less? Discussion. So discussion? Call the vote, John?
Aye.
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 So we're going to do another?
Nope, I think we are, we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much.
Let's put that project.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move to the temporary use permit for Laura Porter.
Is she here this evening?
I have to not speak.
Did she, based on this, does she have a timeframe of how long? Does she just want, it's just the one year? Is she gonna be in there through the winter?
No, I don't think so.
I have no idea.
She didn't indicate at all. I think they were working on, she really didn't know how long she'd be in there. I didn't know, she couldn't stay in there.
Okay, and so this is dated the 6th of June? Does she want it from that, has she been living in there since the 6th of June, or the 8th of June?
She's sleeping.
Oh, she's just sleeping?
She's living in there, yes.
Yeah, okay. Sleeping quarters, okay. But she's renovating her home?
Yeah.
Okay.
It would appear that way.
Okay. You want to do that one?
Yeah. I move to approve the temporary use permit for Laura Porter on 331 West Hugel in Ennis, Montana.
Give a second.
Okay.
Okay, discussion? John, have you seen anything on this?
Nope. I think... She was told to do, so I've got no issue with it.
And what if we just look back in a year if something hasn't changed?
It's only a one year, so if it's a year, then it's a whole different volume.
And does it go from a year from the date she put in, or a year from today?
It's up to the commission, I have...
I would, yeah, say that it was from the date that she put it in. Yeah, because if she's been living there all summer, then that...
She took ownership just before the date of that.
Yeah, so then, yeah, so I think from the date that's on the paper.
And it's only, she can only live in there, just her, right? Can't like have other people come in and live there?
Yeah, I mean, just for, yeah, the owner. I guess we can amend, if you want to amend the motion.
So that's up to what she just plans to live in there, John?
I don't know. I caught her living in there, told her she had to do the application if she's working on her house, and that's what the organ says, so that's what she did. That's, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, so, well, it says, yeah, well, it says from date of issuance, so we'll just go with what that says. Do you want to amend the motion for it?
I have no opinion on it, out of curiosity. Did she indeed bring it to the town on 6/8? And this is 9/9, the 9th of January. Why is it just now on the agenda?
This is the first I've seen of it.
This is the first I've seen.
When did the town receive it?
I didn't get it, but she didn't, when did you see it?
I have no idea. I'd have to go back to the...
So maybe he told her to fill it out, but she didn't drop it off until then. I guess it doesn't have a... I know, but that's when she signed it. I guess we don't have a received...
I can figure that out.
Yeah.
I can move back this to page, so there's...
Okay. I mean, it's, yeah, I don't think it's here nor there.
Yeah, I agree. Any other discussion on that? Call the vote, Jason Pike.
We made on August 17.
Okay.
Please say.
Aye.
Aye.
No, they were, they were in that, they're in there. They're in there.
Okay, we're going to move to the text amendments to Ennis Town Food Zoning Ordinance.
So with these text amendments, they went to the, there was what Alex had, Alex had, and the planning board had a meeting on the text amendments and made a recommendation to the town. In that time, the town hired Cushion Terrell, and so I would like them to have the opportunity to review those and make comments on those as well, and to maybe do a work session on And I think Wayne Freeman is, so I think they should be, I forwarded them to both Wayne and Nicole, but I think it would be a good idea to have a work session with them, because the troubling part with the TND that we've heard from projects in the past is it has no real guidelines. It has a story as Mr. Fode, you know, went through, and it has these vague parameters of what I believe the people in 1996 wanted for the town of Ennis in terms of Western character and stuff like that. So I wonder if it's almost, Alex, in your opinion, if we could consider some design guidelines in addition to the TND instead of just deleting it, because I, it does serve somewhat of a purpose, it just needs more structure.
It needs to be completely reworked, to be quite honest with you. It's a liability.
Okay.
There are some illegal elements in it.
Okay.
That's why we wanted to strike it until such time the town wants to take the time to really think about it and work it up.
Okay.
One of the concerns the planning board and the county would have is we have an interlocal agreement to serve as the planning board for matters that come forth. However, it's not in the county's interest to participate on a new stream, a broken regulation. It is a liability at the current time, and until it's fixed, we would recommend, and the planning board has recommended, that it be stricken.
Okay.
You know, the work that's involved to really recreate a whole document.
Yeah.
That's more of our concerns than the vagueness of the criteria, is the capricious and arbitrary nature of the provision.
Well, maybe the, we can work on the items in there and maybe work with Cushion Terrell on getting those items that aren't appropriate in there and get it to be just that section reworked to be...
Perhaps, that would be something. I would encourage that if that's gonna be the angle, that we really work on it quickly.
Sure.
Because the more projects that come through that still have that overlay, you have to deal with it every time.
Yeah.
It's almost, as me, especially with the onset of development activity, it's more of a burden and a liability than a benefit. And I think it's critical that it either be addressed immediately and adequately or strictly.
Okay.
I'd say we should strike it and then just redo it. What are you wondering about keeping?
Just because it makes reference to...
Before we do that, let's put a motion on the floor so we can have discussion.
Are we approving something on this? It just says review and set meeting.
Yeah. It just says review and set meeting, so that's why I wanted to make that as well.
Can I ask any comments on this? Or questions?
No.
You don't have to ask me, I just had a question.
Technically, technically.
For thoughtful consideration?
Go ahead.
Thank you. If you are, just keep this in mind, if you are, I assume that you will require all applications from here on forward to include all of the same information that we were required to include. This includes anybody who wants to patent a deck, or a back porch, or a pergola, or a driveway, or anything that improves a property, because it's my understanding that the TND overlays the whole town, is that right?
No, no.
It does affect certain zones. Right, so within those certain zones, I would expect moving forward, anybody who wants to build a home or remodel a commercial building, to have to have the same financial overlay, and this was not cheap to do, to add all these documents that you were also required to submit.
Yeah, if we, can I ask questions right now? If we strike it, where does it put them and all the work they just did?
Well, they just, they're under the current, until it passes, they're under the current.
And to our knowledge, we're the first ones who's ever had to do this.
No, it's the building...
To this extent.
The building downtown, Mr. Casey's building, that fit in there as well. He had to go through the TND process, and so did Town Pump, had to go through, and then...
We reviewed Mr. Casey's documents, and they're nowhere as depth as the other.
And who made you go as that? I'm confused right now. I'm in the...
The traditional neighborhood, sorry, the traditional neighborhood development requires, and we were informed by Suzie, who was taking advice from Cushion Terrell, who I understand you don't have a contact with.
Yes, we do.
But you're taking recommendations, it's just a recommendation from them, and so that's the advice that we're going off of, the requirements that we thought we had to do. Josh, if you have anything to add to that? Josh is a project manager, so he really should be answering this question.
From the beginning, it was very unclear what was required from us. We submitted to the town, we'll be submitted initially to have our 40 by 50 building submitted, which was a hand sketch along with the permit application. I included everything that was asked for within the permit. I had a very brief conversation with Suzie, asking her, could we amend an application that we had put in prior for a smaller proposed building? And she said, no, you need to submit a full new package. And I said, that new package includes, she said, a permit and a sketch plan. I submitted that on August 5th. It was sent to Terrell Cushion on August 5th. On August 30th, Terrell Cushion came back and said, we don't recommend that you approve the sketch plans, we want to, you know, professionally drawn site plans, we want elevations, basically, like not necessarily stamped engineered plans, but basically a full, you know, construction package, you know, including elevations, construction details, cross-sections through the wall, you know, basically, again, architectural drawings minus them being stamped by an architect, you know, and I was asked to try to get this, you know, I was, in dealing, in talking with Suzie, we decided that maybe it'd be best to try to get this package together in front of you all today for a vote. We were, we asked to go on to the agenda today for a vote, and were told by the mayor that we could not go on the agenda for a vote today, that you guys had been approving, approving projects improperly up until... up until this project, and you've decided to clean up your act going forward. And that basically the Willie's project would be, you know, kind of the guinea pig for how you guys are going to do things going forward. So, you know, I scrambled to get this package put together, to review with Suzie so that we could have a vote today. And when I called her to confirm our meeting to review all this material, I was told that in fact, we would not be on the agenda for a vote, for really no good reason.
I'm sure we have very good reasoning that Cushion Terrell had not been able to look at that since you delivered it on Tuesday of this week. Cushion Terrell did not have enough time and that's why we will be talking about having a special meeting for you so they have the proper time to get it done. You have a very well-done project. You've taken the time, done it right, and with Suzie and Terrell guiding, you've got it ready and and you've got a very solid project ready.
This will be a time, a long drawn out project like the Casey project and like the Town Pump, because you're going to take the time to do what we've asked through this process. But until they have looked at everything, we.
Yeah, and I will say that Suzie has had a Zoom meeting since I submitted the new package with Terrell Cushion. She had a Zoom meeting yesterday with them and her.
And Wayne is on there, so if we could.
So is Nicole.
Oh, so if we could unmute Wayne and Nicole, and not to talk about Willie's specific project, because that is not on the agenda, but I will make the comment that My Willow was also a TND project and they went through the full process. So, and that was at the beginning of the year, and so.
It was conditional use, I believe, My Willow.
Okay.
Wayne and Nicole are running up.
So.
I've reviewed the most recent TND submissions.
Yeah, so I don't.
Anywhere close to what I submitted to you as far as detail.
Yeah, and I don't think we've had one recently.
Yeah, that's fine. We're happy to do that.
Oh.
Just to make sure you can process.
Yeah, so thanks for making that effort.
You're very welcome. Happy to do it.
Wayne, you are unmuted and Nicole.
Yeah, sure. Happy to respond. Hopefully, I'm not getting a lot of feedback and apologize. Not there tonight, but I guess, I guess maybe just to address the, there's, there's a couple of concerns we have and we submitted that in a, in a, a letter tonight, but you really can't be in a position to make any decisions on the Willie's project because you have to notify that, that has to be noticed publicly. So, I, I think going back to the, the sketch plan, indeed, it was submitted and, and not informative enough. We made recommendations that it needed to be updated. It, it seems as though they've done that at this point and it seems as though they've done that as far as talking to the, the state. We remain a little concerned about some of the issues that are, that are listed in there and would like the opportunity to have a conversation with some of the state inspectors just from a health safety issue, but don't have any issues really that come out of, of some of the things that have been brought up tonight. There are, and we submitted today to Suzie our comments on, on the, some of the purely zoning issues that are out there. So indeed, there are a couple of items I think need to be discussed, but I think the, the main issue is you, you would have to notice this. You can't approve this tonight, so it, it has to be noticed.
Wayne, in getting to the agenda item on the text amendments and to Ennis Town Code zoning ordinance, we'd like to set, I guess, you know, it says review and set meeting to have you and Nicole review and maybe Nicole already has the TND and the recommendations from the planning board and to get your thoughts and Nicole's on those.
Yeah, maybe just for, just for reference, Nicole's our, Nicole's our project planner for this. We've been trying to work with, with Alex and Alex has been absolutely great, fantastic, in, in trying to, trying to get you guys up to, up to a point where, where you can, can make sure that everything that you're doing is going to meet what your code is. Nicole, are you on? I, I can't, I can't really see you on this, but if you are, jump in.
Yeah, I, I am, Wayne. Is, was that Lisa asking for comment? Could you clarify, Lisa, what you're looking for specifically? You're, you're wanting us to comment on Alex's proposal or, I'm sorry?
Well, not at that, not at this time. I think if you have, we need to have you review the, and Alex and for the planning board's recommendation into, I mean, because I know that's one of the things that were outlined is that our code does need to be updated.
Right.
And where those text amendments fall in there. Like I think the text amendment regarding the conditional use permit is great because it gives more clarity to that as well.
Yeah.
So, so and just in your very initial thoughts on the zoning code and the TND since, and where it, do you think it is able to be, the TND would be able to be reworked? Or deleted or, or design standards established that would be in line with state statutes and just basically to clear that up?
Yeah, right. And I guess, yeah, I think if I could have some more time to review Alex's notes and some proposals from the planning board, that'd be great and I'll, I can prepare a comment on that for you. But one of the things I just wanted to mention is that going through and working on the, the Willie's, or excuse me, well, I guess going through and looking at the TND regulations as they're written, it appears as though they're meant to allow for flexibility, right? So really what they were meant to do is say, look, Ennis, particularly that downtown area is very unique in character and has very specific needs and that those needs should be, you know, and, and, and that character should be preserved moving forward. And so what I'm feeling like the regulation was intended to do was allow for different designs to come forward that may not align with the regulation as it's written specifically. And so what it was intended to do was allow for that design flexibility. Now, when you do that, right, if you, on the one hand, you allow for innovation, you allow for different types of projects to move forward, you allow for the, the town itself to maybe make some calls that, you know, as projects come forward, instead of having to, you know, rewrite the zoning code every time a new priority comes forward. But on the other side of that flexibility is what, you know, we've been hearing about is this requirement to be transparent on what the expectation is for the application. And so making sure, moving forward, whether it's with the existing TND regulations or scrapping them altogether or replacing them with something new, that you just keep that in mind that as a community, it sounds like Ennis was interested in fostering good design, you know, creative projects. And, but at the same time, give property owners and the applicant the understanding that they need so that they can put together a full application package. Is, is that helpful to understand a little bit about at least what, what my impression of those existing TND regulations are?
Yes, that is great. And I think that is what it does need, is that clarification so everyone knows what the expectations are.
Right.
Outlined, outlined in that, so.
So, Jason's coming a little bit. Why would we not strike it and start over? But just out of, what is your thought on that? Why would we not strike the TND as Alex has suggested and then start over and put a new one in? Or is it easier to work with something that's already there?
I, I think, I think it could go either way, honestly. My opinion is, is that if it's of the town's opinion that they're wanting to, you know, introduce these sort of flexible standards to, you know, promote different design and to encourage new projects to come forward, then whether it's striking it out altogether and starting over or working with what you have, I feel like either way you could get there. It's just the preference of the, of the community.
Okay, so with that information, what do you guys think?
I guess the only, to me, the only reason why we'd want to strike it out and then vote on it is so nobody else can do it until we fix it. Because it's illegal, right? Some of it's illegal. Otherwise, we're stuck with maybe.
And stuff that doesn't make sense.
Yeah, but that's where we need to adjust the table as, as, as well too. The one concern is that there are no other design standards outlined.
Except for in the TND.
Except for the vague ones in the TND. So.
So how long are we looking at to get a, have Cushion Terrell do a rewrite on it? Is that what we're looking at doing?
Or adjusting the, yeah.
I mean, we started this.
We're just like, I have two other applications right now going after doing.
That are TND. That he doesn't want to deal with.
Can you point out the things that are causing it a hurdle for you?
Yeah, I guess, yeah. What are those?
Everything has a line to it.
I think that's on the, yeah. Well, that's because he was going to, that was the recommendation to strike the whole, that was.
But what do we do for right now with this and with?
Well, we would have to set, we would review and then set meetings to adopt.
But don't we have to go to a hearing and everything else? So it's going to take more time.
Yes, and it will take more.
So then we're pushing off projects that are waiting right now.
No, they would still fall under the same rules.
Most important, where it is, is stop talking and do.
And let's.
You know, yes, talk to.
So I'd like to back up a little bit if I may. And get a little background to the text amendment as a whole project. Because right now, we're talking about a little chunk out of the middle of a three-part text amendment.
Yes.
And since you've received the planning board's agenda, this is the first time I've come down here to even present to you what this is even about. And I think that's fair for the rest of the board member, your commission, who were present on the planning board's meeting, which occurred not too long ago on June twenty eighth. Anyway, a little bit of background is that, as you saw in the earlier agenda item, there are certain things that require participation by the planning board. County's planning board presently serves as the town's planning board via an interlocal agreement. We had a conditional use permit that was requested earlier this year. It was located in the North Forty subdivision. It's called the My Willow project. It came of the time right after R.B. Hart had resigned his position as zoning administrator. And he's been doing that for a number of years and it was the way that he tended to do it. Well, once he was out of the office and now you have new folks having to grapple with these matters, the way you do is you open up the regulations and you follow them. Well, it turns out that for a conditional use permit, that requires review by the planning board, whether it's the town's original board or what's currently in place. So we did the review. Frankly, it was extremely awkward. That was pointed out during the public meeting that we brought to you on that matter. It's not acceptable at all. And what was awkward was the overlay of the TND provision. It's been in the regulations for twenty-plus years and nobody ever cared to fix it until it came to the surface. It is completely not acceptable. Right now, you're regulations in multiple places on the criteria for LCR zoning and CCR zoning.
We did try to fix zoning once, it went nowhere.
I know. So they completely, you have two key, the core commercial residential and the LCR.
Local.
Local commercial, residential, those are extremely important districts for your town. And when somebody wants to do something, they need to know what the standard is. But the standard for both of those points you to defer to the TND, as if the TND is going to give you something. You open up the regulations to those pages and it's hollow. It's a bunch of fluff and like kind of idealistic jargon that says nothing. That's one of the biggest problems.
Yeah.
That we, we found in the review is that it's absent of anything of use. And then it says these things like, when you've received a TND application, it shall take priority over any other project under review by the, by the town. Or by us, now by default, because we're the planning board. Our planning board is not wanting to get mired in in something that is so dysfunctional that it's going to bring a liability to the county planning board. It was recognized that we couldn't even really work with it. It was that bad. So, the text amendment actually is aiming at three things. The first thing is the most important. And it's very important that in one way or another, that be addressed and adopted somehow by the town and not sidelined because of this discussion about grappling with the TND. And that's actually establishing some conditional use standards. That's also what was recognized is your regulations make you go through all these hoops and there's no standards. If something requires a conditional use permit, there ought to at least be a standard. We learned the hard way during the My Willow review that comment from the local emergency service providers isn't even established as an applicable standard, which is ridiculous. It's a standard tenet of zoning that you look at things such as, pardon me. Better right here. Such as, sorry, I didn't think I was going to talk during this conversation. Subsite suitability, appropriateness of design, availability of public services and facilities, immediate neighborhood impact. These are, and those are broken down in very specific details, which give guidance to the town commission for reviewing a request. And these are logical, they're very common across jurisdictions in zoning. If you're going to have zoning, you should at least have the basic tenets of zoning. Right now, the regulations are missing it. So the most important element of this text amendment is not even the TND. It's adoption of some reasonable conditional use standards. Now, the second element is, for the lack of a better short-term alternative, is to strike the TND, recognizing that it does have some nice ideas, but they need some work and it's going to take a long time. And meanwhile, the longer it's in there, we continue to have additional projects come in, we have to continually grapple with the same broken mechanism. So, it's my, my opinion as a planner, and the planning board also voted in accordance with the same recommendation is to strike it. You can continue to work on it. There's time to reinvent something even better that really works. If you were going to strike it, you then have to visit the table in section eleven dash three dash four. Everything that was in yellow is presently part of what was originally in the staff report laid out, reconsidered. And that's because if we strike the TND, we actually have to fill in the gaps in this table. Because before it just had a footnote saying defer to the TND.
Definitely.
Yeah, and now the planning board is not comfortable with trying to fill in those values. And I, I respect that. I think it's a good idea. They thought this is best for the town to decide what the values should be for things such as area-proofed, well, they mean a lot area, front yard, side yard. Front yard, side yard, backyard, set-back, street foundation. So in their recommendation, the planning board passed the recommendation, recommends that you approve the conditional use standards, first and foremost. Second, they did recommend striking the TND for a lack of a better workable option in real time. As far as the table, they recommended nothing. They suggested the town handle it. Subsequent to that period of time, the town has had some workshops, and they've come up with some values. I think they look pretty good. So that's important just to be known. If you're taking the time to talk about this in public, this is actually what the text amendment's about. The current text amendment, the town has now taken time to present values in those same columns that make sense to the town. And they appear to be just fine. I think that they would work well. It is still the planning board's recommendation to presently strike the TND. Because frankly, we're in probably one of the busiest periods of time we've grown and new development interests that the town has seen for a long, long time. And to have this mechanism that is quite the moving target from one project to another, it has arbitrary and suspicious language. It's a liability, and it's something that, that we probably would invest us in not have it. And that's, that's a whole I want to say.
So we can't do anything on this tonight? We just have review instead of meeting?
Well, we have to set for reasons, right? We have to.
Yes.
So we would have to set for a reason.
Mr. Greenbaum?
Yes, thank you. James Greenbaum, I'm town attorney. And I just wanted to try to bring some further viewpoints to what appears to be a dilemma for some folks and give you some commentary from the perspective of being a land use attorney for, oh, I don't know, thirty-somewhat years and represented numerous homeowners associations, builders, clients, and developers. And at this juncture, I represent the town of Venice. So I just want to shed some light and add some comments to what I've already heard here tonight for the benefit of everybody's consumption. So number one, if the town undertakes zoning amendments, it should not be piecemeal. Okay? It should be a comprehensive overview. In, in other words, you don't want to get trapped into saying, oh, this applicant came before us, so now we're gonna adjust the code for that purpose. That's illegal. That's considered spot zoning. Whether it favors somebody or disfavors them, you can't do it that way. So the best approach to doing a zoning amendment would be to do a zoning overhaul, right? Comprehens, start to finish. As far as zoning codes go, building codes, they break down into two major categories. Okay, there is what's called non-discretionary criteria and discretionary review. When we talk about non-discretionary criteria, we talk mostly about things like setbacks, dimensional regulations, how many parking states you need. What is the total height limitation of your structure, right? Non-discretionary, that's the kind of stuff that goes into the chart that I believe Alex was referring to. Total building coverage, you know, total square footage of your lot that is necessary to build on. That stuff is, it's non-discretionary. However, it's not always absolute, because there is a variance process. And we've talked about that so other time. But the variance is a way of getting around what appears to be fixed in stone. What Nicole was commenting about, this traditional neighborhood development overlay, and I will get to your issue as well, Willie's in particular, your somewhat dilemma. This, this type of language here is good, in my opinion. The, the language in your traditional neighborhood development overlay is, as Nicole was describing, it's the general purposes and intents. It's that lofty language that Alex was referring to, that allows you as a town to preserve the character of your community without looking at strict, fixed dimensional regulations. It's the kind of thing that, that allows you to look at a proposal and say, well, we'd like to see a little bit more Western flair to that, you know? Or, or maybe that's, needs to have something a bit more, you know, trout fishing oriented. I don't know. But that's what this is about. Nicole, would you agree with that, that type of, you know, if you're listening in, that this is the subjective review? So we have the non-discretionary, and then you have the discretionary. As a planner, Alex doesn't like this. And I understand why. But you don't have to, you don't have to like it, and you don't have to be the one that provides those comments. And your, your commentary when you review, it's like, well, you know, it doesn't appear very Western or trout fishing oriented or traditional. But, you know, that's for the commission or others to decide. And you make that comment, and that's it, and you're done. As far as Willie's goes, or any applicant for that matter, I'll tell you, doing this stuff for thirty years, this is a pretty thin code. This, this is actually the excerpt from your town code, okay? That's it. That's it, folks. When I work with clients in New York, it's, it's like that. And that's for the town. Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. So it's, it can be daunting, it can be daunting, to go through this type of code and, and find the right section that you fit under. And that's where Suzie is supposed to guide you and help you. And if Suzie can't clear it up, she calls Alex, and if they have further questions, they go to your experts that you hired for the town, okay? But to say that you gotta scrap it all tonight just because, you know, some of this lofty language doesn't really make sense, I don't know how to apply it. Trust me, you don't need to scrap your entire code just because of that. And as far as making it more user-friendly, that's always, always the objective whenever we deal with any type of code. And it's, it's, it's a great concept. It's almost impossible. I mean, our, our Montana legislators, they struggle with it every year. We go up there, we ask them, can you revise the criminal code? Can you revise the DUI process, you know? And it's like, you know, legislators write a certain way. Officers interpret the law as they know how to enforce it. Attorneys, depending upon whether you're the prosecutor, defense, you see something totally different under that same language. And all I could say is that as your town attorney, I mean, I'm available to assist the town, to assist Suzie, to try to coordinate with Alex and your experts, to try to figure out the best way for your proceeding. But I don't think you need to scrap it. I don't think you need to scrap it. And I, and I certainly would say this to you as a town, in all fairness, when somebody has undertaken their process, and I've represented clients from the other side, and when you change the rules midstream, it's, it's not really fair.
Back when we looked at working on zoning would have been a way better time, because it was before all this came.
One question.
Right now.
One second, please. One question. So is it your recommendation that we leave it as-is and let Cushion re-look at it and start a rewrite on it, rather than scrap it?
What's wrong with James rewriting it?
Sorry.
Well, I think it's probably a combination of the two.
I, I, I think that, again, I would just reiterate that if you're trying to reorganize the code to make it flow better, easier to understand, those sort of things can, can and should be done. As far as, if you think that there are dimensional setback regulations that need to be changed or revised, then by all means undertake that sort of review and revision. If, if you think that the thing just totally fails the town, that it's unworkable, then perhaps you have to start from scratch. But I, I don't see that. I don't see that. From what I hear, I mean, there are issues about finding the right section to go to. And or, and in particular, zoning overlays do create complications. I mean, if you, if you're working, let's say hypothetically, with a client that owns property on Long Island where there's flooding, and you have, you know, FEMA regulations on top of town code regulations, on top of county regulations, and then you have state, you know, Department of Conservation regulations, and then, and on top of that, there's a harbor overlay district that you have to, and then there's a water recharge district that you have to maintain. And, yeah, it's, it becomes very, very time-consuming and bureaucratic. And that's why, you know, people, they hire professional planners to assist them in their applications, and they sometimes, you know, hire attorneys to get them through the process. But, you know, I think they have, I haven't reviewed their proposal, I haven't reviewed the comments, so I really can't, you know, add much to that. But, you know, again, if you can work your projects through intelligently and, and create and improve the neighborhood for everybody's benefit, then it's working. If it, if it's not working, know that it's not working.
Thank you.
So. I know with My Willow and everything, even with licensed professional planners, it was confusing and hard, and that's why they got the attorney, and that's why they went that way. So I think that there's definitely stuff that needs to be fixed.
But with that being said.
The traditional overlay district, what it does is it says, okay, you have your commercial building, okay? They want to add a shop or a storage or barrel facility there. And what this states, it's like, okay, so you met that criteria, now here's another review process. It's more subjective, it's discretionary, it doesn't fit in with the character of the town. Doesn't preserve the look and feel of what makes it such a very special place. That's what this is. It's purposes and intent, okay? It's not, it's not how big is your tent, it's purposes and intent, okay?
Thank you. With that being said, it makes, to me, makes more sense to go ahead and take it up to Nicole and Wayne and let them start looking at it. Especially if we have the opinion of our attorney that says that it's probably the way we should go, and let's, let them have it, have that. But Nicole, one question I would have with that before we even make decisions, how long would it take for you guys to be able to review and get back with recommendations to us?
Um, I could probably, I could look at it and, and make some suggestions, you know, within, within a week. Um, but I, I, but, you know. Yes, within a week.
What do you think about in the meantime, Nicole? Because there is projects coming up, and there is projects.
Yeah, right. Well, technically speaking, it's, it's my opinion that, you know, applications need to be reviewed under the regulations in place at the time that the application is submitted. So I, I get that we want to, you know, avoid any further confusion, but, you know, the burden is on the town to review the applications as, you know, under the current regulations, because that's the ones that are in place at the time that the application was made. Now, an applicant could decide, hey, look, this is a total mess. I'm gonna wait. I think it might be easier if I withdraw my application and wait, you know, but that would obviously be, you know, up to each applicant. But unfortunately, and, you know, your attorney, you know, might, you know, could clarify or, you know, say something different. But it, it would seem to me that in the meantime, you have to continue to review as the regulations stand.
I agree with that, Nicole. So on that note, do we, like Jim was saying, do we piecemeal it and just do the TND, or do we kick it to?
Well, because we have the conditional use portion, too.
Yeah. Basically, what I was saying is, do we piecemeal it and do just the TND and this stuff and have them review that? Or should they just review the whole thing like Jim was saying?
I think it was a matter of, because we do have, so about four years ago?
Four.
We embarked on a zoning rewrite.
Yes.
So it was about four, four years ago, maybe even, yeah, four or five years, four, yeah, two thousand and, it was in two thousand and seventeen that they, we embarked on a zoning rewrite. And at the time, we came up with a draft, and we didn't even get to the third page, because people were, got misinformation and just, and it was specifically for making it more user-friendly and bringing it up so it didn't have these inappropriate things in there, the legalities and whatever. And it was met with very harsh criticism, and that, at the time, is the reason why the commission backed off from that. But obviously, now is the reason why they were embarking on that, was because of seeing things come down the pike. I, I would like, I would like to take Alex's advice from the planning board, since they do, in the respect that maybe we do the conditional use permit and that portion, and make it a priority. And then if Nicole can review the TND portion, and we can work on that, because we will have to have public hearings regarding those as well.
I think we prioritize it like that, but I think in the grand scheme of things, the whole.
Yes, exactly. So this, I think this is a Band-Aid, but that is, that the whole thing gets done.
Yes. Let's stick with this. So everyone, and then, does everyone think we should move the TND to Cushion, or should we set it or review it at this point in time?
I would.
You think just the conditional use?
No, no, no. I would like Cushion Terrell to review the TND as well, and just like Jim said.
So the whole?
So, yeah, so it preserves the, you know, the character and the intent.
Jason?
Yeah.
That's what your thoughts too. Christie?
We gotta fix this. We should have fixed this, right?
Corey, what are your thoughts?
Yeah.
So how quick can we do all this? I'm sick of meetings, but I think this is a priority.
She said she could review it in a week.
So then we'll do a special meeting anyway for Willie's, and we can look, we have to do stuff.
Yeah.
This is like the third or fourth time I've looked at zoning now, and nothing's happening with zoning.
So when, when you're talking about this, you get this back in a week, and then you have a special meeting. Does, does an outfit like Willie's fall under, like, you know, this lady up here recommended, this rule, or do they have to follow the new rule?
No, because it requires two, so this would be a work session, and then it requires two public hearings.
It takes a long time.
And that, because it's an ordinance change. It takes.
Who'd have the option of withdrawing or having, then if you wanted to, and then waiting until the new standards, and then letting, but right now.
I guess my concern is, is just a resident of town. I've been in several of your meetings, and I've seen builders, I haven't seen any businesses really, but I've seen builders treated differently from builder to builder on some of your zoning stuff, depending on if they've got an attorney, depending on if they don't, depending on if they've done, you know, fifteen homes currently, and then you shut the guy down. I mean, that broke my heart that night when I saw that guy. So what, what my question is to you guys is, I, I don't like the, the different treatment for different people. We've got a business owner here that employs a lot of people in this town that is good for this community. I don't want to see him melt up. I wouldn't mind seeing some of its other people melt up. But when we've got somebody employing people in this town, that's a hell of a lot different than just helping.
No, I agree, and I think treating, and that is what.
You know, we don't get told about this stuff. We don't know about this stuff. I had no idea that all this was going on. I asked, I asked Robin today, actually, when she was starting.
Oh, I didn't either.
So I feel stupid, so.
No, I mean, it's, but I'm just saying from my past, like, I would, I would like to see something instead of.
And I think what happened with Royland's.
Make him jump through all the hoops, that's what I'm saying. You know, what, what they're doing to the town.
Uh, Marin, Marin, Lisa? This is Wayne with Cushion Terrell. I wonder if I could. This is Wayne with Cushing Terrell. I wonder if I could say something real quick. I just wanted to clarify with regards to trying to get something in a week. I think what we would have is some recommendations and to go forward in a week. We're not going to have a solution for it. And I think, again, a lot of what would come forward must look for the public and the public can make a decision. And I guess what I would resonate with is the folks that were clapping. I think we probably need to defer to the conditions that Willie's submitted on here. And we need to rule on that particular one as it is laid out. The other thing is, you know, just being a part of these types of operations and being in front of councils and seeing planning boards across the western United States. These are growing pains. And just wanted to say, you're not completely faced with a lot of growth issues. And this is really, this really gets people upset and gets people, you know, coming out and supporting their community, wanting to preserve their way of life and all of those things. So this is not unique. We see it all the time. So I just want to throw that in and let you know it's... While I love Ennis and I think it's a unique town, you're not facing any issues in the growth area. And stick with it and just appreciate the ability to help you.
Thanks, Wayne. So... Wayne, can I ask one other question as well? Sorry. When will you have the setup for Willie's where we can actually sit down and look at it? What's your timeframe on that?
You know what? We've submitted later today, this afternoon's comments on that. There's a couple of things and I'll just talk through them. Couple of things that we have some concerns on that are health, safety issues. We wouldn't have those concerns if this thing were sitting out in the middle of the field. But because of where it's located, I think we want to, because you've asked us to review this, we're in a position where we need to cover our bases and we need to have a discussion with the state to... So I'd like the opportunity to have that. I intend to do that as early as tomorrow. The other issues that we've kind of laid out have to do with a couple of things that I don't believe that are in its mouth. I don't, in my opinion, I think, again, using the TND process that as it is, now we just need to be able to review some of the new information from Willie's. So I don't necessarily see it as a drawn out process. We'll do whatever we can to try to expedite that. We recognize that Willie's is a huge employer and an anchor in the community. So I know that you all probably want to be in a position to help do it however I can as long as it fits within the goals or the conditions that you've got already within the... So we're going to do whatever we can to help expedite.
Okay, so with that being said, could we set, would you be ready by the 14th of September to look at the Willie's project and then also these text amendments at the same meeting with that? Would that be enough time for you or no?
We have a workshop on the 14th for our... But you know, I think at least as far as the question, I'm going to defer a little bit to Nicole on some of the comments. Nicole, you want to jump in here?
Yeah, sure. So I think what makes the most sense is for, you know, Suzie and I to get together and collect all of the information that Willie's has submitted because I think they've even, I was even forwarded some new information this afternoon that I think might address some of the things that we talked about with Suzie yesterday. So if we can get with Suzie and collect all of the information so that we have an understanding of exactly what the proposal is, I think there's nothing that would prevent that from happening by that meeting. But what, you know, you just have to make sure that, you know, that you're meeting your notice requirements and that, you know, if you're going to be voting, that, you know, you're providing enough time, you know, for notice.
Actually, I was thinking the 16th. I can't see, sorry. I was looking at a week from today, so that would actually be the 16th.
A week from today? Okay.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, right.
And that's, I wanted to just make sure that that's enough time for you to be able to do that and then also help Willie's move forward with their project after you've had the proper time to look at.
Yeah, right. And again, yeah, as long as Suzie's available, you know, I can definitely work with her on getting that all together.
We might be able to have a work session, but we have to look at our notice requirements, right?
Yeah. I think, well, because I don't, are you talking public notice or just posting notice?
I'm talking public notice. In order for the council to make an actual voting decision, I believe that there's statutory requirements. I'll refer to, I'll defer to your counsel there.
May I?
Please.
Yeah. When we post a meeting, I always do it through, try to do it three days in advance. I can do it 72 hours. We can go as short as 48. But I think Suzie was wondering if... I don't believe that. I mean, if you're... Yes, indeed, when we do ordinance changes, et cetera. Public hearings have to be nervous to...
Counsel, if I could, I'll just say, yeah, Suzie and I can get together in an effort to expedite the review of the Willie's application. I think we all recognize that it's an important one to get rolling and I know they're up against some deadlines to get things moving. And so I think that's something that Suzie and I can work on unless I'm speaking out of turn, Suzie.
No, absolutely. Get their recommendations and just, if I'm saying this wrong, but get their recommendations and set a work session, that same meeting, go over their recommendations.
Okay, so once we get the recommendations...
Then the council looks at it and then they set public readings after. But there shouldn't be any public readings.
Not on Willie's, on text amendments and stuff like that.
Yeah, for the text amendments, we have to have it written.
Yeah, so we'll come back with their recommendations at that point in time, get it written and then set up the public readings or the text amendments, sorry.
Correct.
And the text, actually, published. It's not just a notice. It has to actually be actually texted.
So if we did all this, that all has to be published in the newspaper?
If you did like a comprehensive zoning, it has to be published.
If I get into that, it does sound a little fast for the text amendment, Counsel. It is a bigger lift than reviewing an application. And so I'll have recommendations, but you know, just keep in mind that actually crafting the language is a bit more complicated, as you can imagine.
Does this sound good to everyone? Move that forward. I'm going to take a five minute recess.
Yeah.
It's September 16th.
Sorry.
Oh, six.
Six, sorry.
The early ones are...
That's both, that's Willie's also.
Don't hurt all.
I thought it was going to be all nice outside of your eyes. I almost put a sweatshirt on.
Yeah, it's, I went to outfit.
I used to help a lot with Julie's house. That's just so many American shit.
Oh, yeah.
There's some of my...
And she's got this big thing. She's like, it's the really nice.
I think we broke the... Yeah. I think we broke the...
We're showing you flowers.
September 16th, because that's hot stuff. Today at work, we're in a locker with the kitchen. And my mom is like, okay, and I was like, baby.
Yeah, I was like, I was on the phone so much yesterday. Oh, babe, I was like, I still get sleep. Yeah, so it's like, oh, my God. I told Jason last night, I loved him. He's like, I don't know. I said, like, yeah. And I'm like, and it's like... And he's like, oh, warrior warrior. That's what it comes to. I know. I haven't done natural work in a while.
I'm sorry. I got there.
Sure, you were rolling for me. Something even in your fingers.
Can you tell that the bags under my eyes are... Workshop or...
I was trying to look up... See if there were any ways.
I know you guys are worried about this.
So worried.
2116.
I'm like, I have to go on Saturdays. If I have to.
So we'll call the meeting back to order and move on to the budget adoption for fiscal year 2021, 22. Okay, how we're going to do this is we will allow for public comment ahead of time. We ask that you keep it brief. We've heard a lot of what you're going to say and try not to duplicate. Then the commission will go through the resolutions and vote on them and discuss them. So we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Raise your hands if you have a public comment and state your name.
I'd like to make one word or one sentence.
You please state your name.
Myron Lawwell.
Thank you.
On this budget, I would prefer that everybody remember that they are elected to be prioritized, prioritized benefits for the city, not for pet projects. That's all I have to say.
Any other public comment?
Barbara Durbin. I live in town. And I would like to see the... I would like to see the, uh, immediate, uh, attempt to replace the part timer as John had planned it to do. And the village for a permanent, uh, additional officer. So I'm for increasing and not waiting on and pushing this down the road. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Um, clearly, there was lots of comments on Tuesday night. They were all great, um, as the library, um, stated that they have more traffic coming into their building, which clearly they do. I mean, they got a bathroom, they're kind of like a little mini chamber. So as, you know, they need more money to operate, so it was unfortunate to accommodate the more people coming for it. Pretty simple.
Any other, please state your name.
Kurt Crotto. So if Officer Moore allocated the ARPA funds for a purpose he sees fit, I think that should be honored. He obviously works this community. He knows what we're up against. Um, with tourist season, it gets awfully busy. Maybe more traffic stops could be made. I don't think, you know, I see the sheriff's department making a lot of stops, but I don't see where Officer Moore has the time to make those calls either. Um, I listen to response time on the radio. Takes forever for sheriff's department to get to some of these calls. I think if Officer Moore feels a need for a second officer, he should be granted that. And like he said, the responsibility would rest on his shoulders if he can't secure more funding. But he made it clear the other night that if we use these funds for the officer, for the requirement of a second officer, he could easily procure more funds to retain that officer. And I think if that's something he's what, willing to put on his shoulders, you gotta give him a shot to do it. I don't think these other projects with heated bathrooms and all that, if the funds are, he worked hard to get those funds for that officer, it should go to the officer. Everything else should be put aside. You want more funding for those projects, apply for your own grants. He applied for that grant, it should go towards his department. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other public comment, please?
Jonathan Isley. Um, my son would have been here tonight, but it's probably passed, I'm here soon. But he wanted to mention that having Officer Moore at the school has helped him out a lot. And if, and we need to have towards Jonathan Peters more, and if we need a second officer, then we need to grant that where he can have a second officer, though he's there. Um, John has been there a lot for my family, um, especially my boys. And Kayden wants to be able to see John. Um, cause he's heard me talking, my wife, we've been going on stuff. And he goes down, are we gonna lose Officer Moore? I said, I hope not, but. And, uh, so that's all we really wanna say. The, um, yeah, thank you.
CJ Feldman, uh, I live just north of town. Uh, I was in law enforcement thirty years. And folks, this is common sense. Common sense. We gotta support John. I mean, he's done asking for a lot. And, uh, it's gonna really benefit the town and the surrounding area.
Just as an added note, yesterday afternoon, I spoke with Sheriff Horner. Talked about a lot of things. I'll just talk, I'll just reiterate one. He felt there was a great benefit that the town support and continue with their support for having an officer in the street. He believes that he has, he's not only benefited the county, he has, uh, reduced some things before they came to light. There's a great advantage to the school, to the community, to the sheriff's department to have him. And he believes that it's incumbent about the town to be behind that, and he's glad that he's there.
Mark Dingfelder. I've heard over and over again, nothing but constant, constant good information about it, what his positive impact law enforcement's had in this public school. That's where we stop this nonsense that's going on in these big towns. We've got kids and everybody else who don't respect it. He stopped that at that level. We have a generation of people growing and growing up with a positive feeling towards law enforcement. That needs to stay here. It needs to stay here to keep going.
Shall I get put in? I think each and every one of you has a job to do to protect this town. And in order to protect this town, you need to make sure that we have law enforcement. Officer Moore has been over backwards for a lot of people in this town. He's taking care of our kids. He's taking care of our families. He's helped me and my family out more than I can tell you. You need to think about what you're doing and protect this town. And he's the best way to do it.
Any other public comment?
Um, Trevor Lockhart. So I had kind of a, it's a more targeted question, but I'll keep it quick tonight. I said, I wanted to say on Tuesday. But I just wanna reiterate for anyone that wasn't here also, there's been a lot of concessions made by John Austin. So if you look at the budget, I pointed out a line item, a certain one where the seventy nine thousand dollars mysteriously turned into twenty five thousand dollars when I asked for that extra forty, almost forty nine thousand dollars when it was a concession that John Moore made to some other projects in order for this ARPA money, in order to help with him get that funding. And to just, you know, in general, to order, basically, a gentleman's honor that, you know, hey, if I get this grant, I have this, like, I will make that sacrifice and have, allocate you guys this, you know, almost fifty grand for this opportunity to get this grant. So I just wanna start that, since people asked me about that last meeting when I mentioned it. And then other than that, um, how, I just, you don't have to answer, cause I, I know it's not like a Q and A here, but how does it work? Are there like different line items in the budget that you guys will be voting on? Or were there different, or was it just passing in it? Cause you mentioned number of resolutions, but is it, are there a couple of different resolutions that you guys sort of settled on since last time? Like the general fund, I know was mentioned about speaking up about how to create ARPA, the general fund, um, some other things, like.
The things that we were talking about would have been adjustments in the budget. We have two resolutions that we'll, that we do vote on.
Okay. Okay. So, okay, so that was the, yeah, well, we briefly went over last time. Okay.
And so we were making adjustments as we were discussing and talking, and that's what, uh, me was on.
Okay, and that's where the.
I forgot what day I did it.
And that's where the info will come out, just kind of about, like, I know Lisa was gonna follow up with Shelley about how much a mill would cost and how much per voter, like, you know, what the burden might be if John did apply for a mill at some point on the road and that type of stuff. That would be a new discussion than that, or?
Yes, it, it can be.
Okay. That's really all that I had.
Hi, I'm Tanya Kewal. Um, I don't live in town, but I live up in Shining Mountains. And, um, I don't know, but I had heard, and maybe this is wrong, I don't know for sure. I wasn't here on Tuesday, but I had heard that, um, instead of having an officer in town, they wanted to leverage the, um, services of the sheriff. And I'll just tell you, um, personal experience. I was at home one day and, um, three dogs off leash ran up on my property, one started chasing my horse. And I called my neighbor and my neighbor said, if it's chasing your horse, you can shoot it. Um, I didn't shoot it. Uh, it happened to be someone's dog and it was on ask and this, that these dogs were located or who the owner was. But I called the sheriff and I tried to call and get through like three separate times and the line kept cutting out and I wasn't able to get through a sheriff. And it took, but well over two and a half hours for a sheriff to show up at my house. And that's because the sheriff was out and sheriffing. I'm a woman by myself and it was a real crime. I don't have two hour, two and a half hours to wait and I'm not looking to be a vigilante or without a cop, especially in a town where you have bars and people are drinking and you have tourists who are coming in who don't necessarily have the same affinity or the same community. And I also would say that it is really important to have a cop in town, not just one, but two, cause you need to be able to relieve him from his duty and let someone else take over. Or in the stu, with the duty body in your school system, you do need a cop there. It's a great thing to have community policing. It's a great thing to go back with relationships and to have your kids feeling safe, especially in an age where you do see school shootings, let's just call a spade a spade. And I'm sure kids see these things on the news, et cetera. So him developing this relationship, especially in an environment where we're anti-vulcanizing and things like that, it's a great thing to have someone like him here and to also give him the relief, the budget makes sense. And the other thing, like all the personal, you know, factors aside, I don't know what the backs are of how many cases or how many calls he answers a week. I don't know how they're resolved, but I'm sure there, you know, we have a, we don't have a, uh, an exorbitant amount of crimes, but there's gotta be enough that he is, has to go and answer these calls. Like last night at four in the morning, someone posted to the, uh, to the town, has anyone heard those gunshots? Did you hear the gunshots? And I, I was up before AM checking Facebook, okay? I didn't hear about all the people on the phone. But I didn't respond, cause I live in town and I didn't hear the gunshots, but I'm thinking, call the cops. What are you gonna do when there's no cop to call? You're gonna pull out your own gun and protect yourself? I mean, come on. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Exactly. Right, everyone has their own idea and their own baronder. At least keep him by the standard of its laws. And if you have him as an option, that's a great option to have. It's also a great option to protect yourself. End of story. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was my favorite. Uh, now, uh, Tanya brought up a good point about, you know, the bars in town and issues we've had like that. I know on Fourth of July, there were a couple of fights outside bars. I mean, I think John even responded, if I remember correctly. The sheriff for Sit Down Lions Park, I mean, it was just pandemonium, there were people being chased. I mean, it's, there's always stuff like that, you know, on the big events. But look at, you know, a town like Virginia City that doesn't have a town officer, I mean, a couple was almost beaten to death. But I hear as a horses guy, just, you know, I'm not there to go. And, you know, the sheriff recalled the response time was there. By the time they got there, the guy was there, he was gone the next morning, you know? Think of that as your family here in town. Think of that as Tanya walking back to her car down the street. And then they picked up that guy's wife and threw her under a car and beat him to a coma, you know? And John Moore is that guy is gonna be there, the sheriff might be all the way around and share again. So I just think Tanya brought up a really good point there.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have one more comment. I'm sorry. I don't think that our money needs to go to heated toilets at the Lions Club park. And if the Lions Club wants to put heated bathrooms in their park, they have lots of ways to come up with money. We all support them.
It's our city park. The Lions Club's just.
O'Connell.
O'Connell.
Yeah.
This is public comment. Okay, any other public comments?
Yeah, I got one. Fury Rogie. I don't know if he still offered, but he offered a ride along at one point in time, this was probably two years ago. I took him up on it. Um, if they're good, wants to know what good this man does for the community, ask to go on a ride along and if you have COVID, permanent calls or anything, I'm saying he does it. But it was an eye opener for me. Um, that guy's awesome. Not a good he did, it wasn't even ranked tickets outside of that, was phenomenal. Uh, knowing his direct access to the, to the actual school, I don't have children, but if I had them, I would want them to go to this school and have an officer there. So John, thank you for all you did.
Any other public comment?
Do we want to check, oh, and check with the people online?
Yeah, when you're, when you're having accidents south of town, Al Barney, on the hill, on the hill. That guy was a paramedic. He's the first one on the scene by fifteen or twenty minutes by himself. Fire department, we don't get there. I mean, we gotta drive from our houses, from work, from wherever, to meet up with him. He's there by himself, taking care of getting stuff, your kids, your grandmother, your mother, your wife. That guy right there, he's there first. You're not gonna get that with anything else. I don't care what, what you say. I mean, to defund, to get rid of, you should be given more, not. This, this is a service that we're not getting anywhere else. We're not gonna get it anywhere else.
Damn right.
John's a man. You're not gonna get enough, we don't even have a paramedic in the ambulance. This guy was a paramedic. He knows, he's done it. He had twenty years of it. You got, you're double duty right there. That's all I got to say.
You wanna make the announcement that anyone that, online that wants to make a comment to put up the little hand?
Well, they can unmute themselves.
Oh, oh, okay.
We don't have them restricted.
Oh, oh, okay.
And she's got nothing there.
I'm gonna call it one more time.
Is there anyone online that would like to make a public comment? Okay, with that, we're gonna close public comment and move to Commissioner. Comment and, um, vote.
Oh, I hear some more comments.
Someone's trying to talk.
Oh, I want to think.
They're not unmuted.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we're, let's go to five five nine two oh two one. I think we need to call for a motion for this. I'm wondering if we don't do six oh first.
Which one is six oh?
The. Five six oh.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Six oh, do you do that one first or does it?
Is that, I gotta make more sense and then do the whole budget? Yes, no, does it matter? Do the.
And I just say resolution. I meant adopt resolution.
Yeah.
Adopt, right?
Budget.
Budget, because it's. Of course.
Yes. Of course.
Okay, so, okay, stick with five five nine. That's what. Sorry.
I move to adopt resolution five five nine dash two zero two one. The resolution of town commissioners for the town of N S, state of Montana, setting the mill levy for the twenty twenty one, twenty two fiscal year budget of the town of N S.
Second. Okay, now we'll do discussion. I'll just read the rest of this. We have resolved, uh, at the N S town commission on September ninth, the commission did establish the following tax levy for the twenty twenty one, twenty two fiscal year budget, general fund eighty six point seven nine, library fund twelve, P R S four, health insurance forty point one eight. For a total mill levy based on a taxable valuation of three million four hundred and fifty five thousand five hundred and twelve, set at one forty three point one five mils for a total tax collection of four hundred and ninety four thousand twenty and twenty six dollars. The breakdown of mills levy are as follows, ninety six point seven nine non-voted mills, six voted mills, and forty point one eight permissive mills. Okay, discussion.
Anything, Cory?
Would this, would this be where we would discuss, I guess, additional funding to the police department? It's already set in the budget as such. Okay, I'm, I'm talking even like additional potential funding for that, or would that be in Commissioner's comment? I'm gonna bring that up in major comments as well. This is just for the budget itself that is set in front of me.
You got? No, do you have anything, any comment?
Oh, no.
No, you're on discussion.
I just wanna say that I got a few things here. Um, originally, the people of Dennis voted to start the police department. And I think that people of Dennis vote to expand the police department. By voting, like us choosing to do that on our own, I think could be possibly a bad decision. Um, this is why we need to do a mill levy to fund an expanded police department, which includes an extra officer. And it will, a mill levy would help us fund this forever and not just temporarily. So I've been invited to be part of a small group to spearhead this mill levy, uh, along with John Moore and Jim Greenbaum. And we will discuss and figure out exactly what it's gonna be and we'll bring it before the commission. And hopefully that will be on the ballot for May. What we can do, though, is use the A R P A money and that will fund the expanded police department for one year. But the new position will have to be advertised as a one-year position so that the person knows that they could possibly lose their position.
so that the person knows that they could possibly lose their position after that funding is gone. After the funding is gone, though, we're gambling that the mill levy will pass or that we'll be able to get some grant money. And hopefully, we can get that grant money. But the grant money will also be another temporary solution. Three to four years approximately. So after, if the mill doesn't pass, then we'll have to figure out another source of funding. These are all just different options, but let's hope the mill passes. But another option would be to do a resort tax to fund the police department. The benefit of a resort tax is that it doesn't really burden the Ennis taxpayers. I mean, yes, you're gonna have to cater to resort tax when you buy stuff, but I would say ninety percent of the money that comes into the funding, the revenue from the resort tax would not be paid by Ennis residents. So, yes, some conditions on that for me, that the mill levy gets on the ballot and gets going. That was one of my conditions that I told him there. And he reached out to me and we have the word moving forward with that. So also, hopefully, we can start a process to get this resort tax going. And what the people vote on that, too. You know, if people don't want it, then get a vote down. And then I'd like the commission to be part of deciding what an expanded police department looks like for Ennis. Because we really didn't discuss expanding the police department or adding another officer, which I'm not against, but I would like to have an in-depth discussion of, you know, what this is gonna look like for Ennis going forward.
One thing I would like to say with the expanded, it's not really an expand, it's an extension of the current position. We already have a half-time officer on budget. So it would just be making them a full-time. That is not a new position created.
Now, I second, and I agree with everything that you said on top of that, but that is an, it's just an expansion or an extension of what we already have.
Right. Okay.
And I just wanted to clarify that. But I agree and second everything else you said. Any other comments?
You know, I really, I would like to have a, a in-depth discussion. I mean, like you said, it's only gonna be, uh, taking a half-time to a full-time, but, you know, what does that look like? Maybe we have, could that officer maybe do foot patrol or maybe even horseback patrol down there?
The conversation you made there. Can you ride a horse?
You could, but you gotta have somebody in a car. If you arrest somebody, you gotta have, you gotta have a car to be able to hook them. You also have to have a person certified and trained and meets all the requirements for liability safety. It's like stomp on somebody.
But like I said, can you?
Oh, I'm glad.
Okay. But the question will also, because as I've talked with people, is another officer enough? Maybe another officer isn't enough. Maybe we need to look at more. And that's the more conversation that we need to handle.
And that's why I was saying expanded police department, not just another officer.
Just to quick, just to quickly expound on that. A mill levy is basic, is based off of property tax. So that's us paying for this when the tourists receive a lot of the benefit of a police force here in town, for sure. So definitely something to take into consideration on who pays for it or where the funding comes from.
Okay, any other commissioner?
Uh, yeah, I have some things. Since we met on Tuesday, I had the time to reflect on some things and come up. So I think we all basically want the same things in a small community. We want to be self, safe, healthy, to provide for our families and to be, have the opportunity to be happy. My husband and I moved to this community more than fifteen years ago to, to raise our family. We've been, you know, volunteered, whatever, done that. And what I love about local government is that not only that we see eye to eye on every issue, especially Mr. Bancroft and I never really see eye to eye on an issue, but what was...
A lot of them.
A lot of them. A lot of them. But what was great is about, I don't know, was that two years ago? The timeline, we had the opportunity to take a ride to Butte together. And I really got to know Mr. Bancroft and I hope you got to know me, too, with different stories. And what I love about local government is that, um, yeah, we work together for the benefit of our community. So in the past two days, I have been nothing but on the phone. I have called several towns across the state, including Scobee and Shoto and Red Lodge and Three Forks. I've talked to the Madison County Finance Director. I've even reached out to our insurance carrier, Derek Shepherd. And my spots on that are, I'm gonna share with what I learned on that. But also, and I took into consider your comments and what I heard. I heard that communities, our community really values the Ennis Police Department. You would like to see something happen now. I also heard county residents wanting more coverage, too. So I would encourage county residents, just as you're coming to these meetings, go to the county commissioners meeting. That is where, you know, if you want an expanded county service, that's where you will go to get county services through the county commissioners. And so, and I implore you to do that. I know that Phil has tried to hire people and haven't been able to fill those positions. So maybe we need to find the root of that for, for you all that live in the county and want, you know, faster response times. So, so that's what I heard, and I would encourage you to do that, too. Some, a lot of my things echo with Jason and I, you know, talking with Derek Shepherd from MMIA. You know, he said the size of your town, yes, you could expand. The national average is that, that you would expand. He also did have some things like that echoed what Jerry said of what John does. And looking at those calls, so our, from our call volume, we, I sent that to Derek there at MMIA. And what's interesting about him is he is a, um, human resources person, but his previous thing was in law enforcement. And so he had, he had some really great things. So I forwarded him our past three years of commissioner reports from the Ennis Police Department. And one of the ways, one of my biggest concerns is this is temporary funding for essentially a permanent position. And we've got to figure out that permanent funding. We do need to figure out that. And I want to work towards that permanent funding. But the ARPA funds are a one-time allotment. And so what can we do now? And my concern is, is that if we send someone, if we hire someone and send them to the police academy, the first available opening is in April. So they would not actually even start patrolling until next summer, until we'd be looking at the next fiscal year's budget.
That's not true. Once they're done with field training, they can go on their own.
Oh, they can't, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I'm, so you do six months of them with field training?
And without going to the academy, then you're on there.
Correct. They can be out on their own as long as they have a direct contact with another law enforcement officer.
Okay.
They can patrol by themselves before they go to the academy.
Okay, okay. Well, that, that's, that's even better.
Certified officer right out the gate. May not have to be a cadet.
Well, and that, and that is what lead to, so when Derek Shepherd took a look at, um, our, his cursory look, just a very brief look, and this is maybe where we do a full-on audit, is to what is our call volume? What types of calls? How many officers we actually do need to add? So we have a, you know, we have data, you know, evidence-based decision based on that. And he said one of the things we could do now would be to add something, and he gave me a description from another community, a community service officer or something along. That would put, and what, and what they basically do is they can assist John in doing some of the mundane details of his enforcement. So it'll allow him to be readily available for more schools. So that is something we can do now. Because it is a gamble, like Jason said, of are we gonna have the funding? And then do we make that big investment of funding, of this temporary funding for a permanent position for someone to get the training and then move on to a different community? So that, that is one of my concerns as well. When I talk to these different agencies, you know, that was the concern, too. It's not that it's maybe not allowable or whatever with the ARPA funds, but it is a temporary funding for a permanent position that we need to figure out. We need to figure out the permanent funding for that. So I did contact, it's actually the person you talked to when you find, want to find out, Millage, is Vicky Tilstruf. I forwarded you guys the little worksheet that she sent over. And just for easy math, to raise a hundred thousand dollars, it would be thirty-nine dollars and six cents per one hundred thousand dollars of assessed value. A house, I'm gonna use a house on my street, our house. It's eleven hundred square feet on a single lot. And so our assessed value, which went up a lot this past time, is two hundred thousand dollars. So it's assessed value, not market value. So we're, it would be seventy-eight twelves for basically a single-family home on a single lot. Mr. Larry asked about his four-plex. So to, for his four-plex, it would be, his, it had a value of five hundred thousand dollars. So he'd be looking at one hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty cents to add a hundred thousand dollars worth of funding. So I just wanted to put that out, so... Per year, yeah. So, yeah, per year.
I was telling him a four-plex for fifteen hundred a month, that's not much money.
So. Yeah. So, but I just wanted you to have those numbers. It's, neither here nor there, we just, we have to have evidence. You know, we have to have the data to know and to make good decisions.
Well, I, I agree with that, Lisa, but did, when you moved out here with your family, was, I mean, was it a sure thing when you came down to raise your family? Was it a hundred percent, set in stone, like, move in a group, we got it done? Or did you take a gamble?
I moved out.
It was a gamble, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I, I hear you. So I'm just saying, these are, but we are a public entity. We're not supposed to gamble with public money.
Didn't put the lawsuit on private property on there.
So, uh...
No public comment right now, please.
So I just wanted to, to share some of, some of my concerns and knowing that, I know that we need to do, you know, that I heard you, that you do want to hear something now. So I'm trying to come for myself. There's four other people on this panel. It's for myself, that we don't make a fiscal decision that has, gonna have, you know, consequences as to someone, we hire someone and then not be able to fund their position. Because that's a pretty big consequence. So, um...
What priorities are the public's? No public comment, sorry. We gave the opportunity for public comment before that.
So, and I'm, yeah, I mean, if that, I mean, John...
Big city, officer leaving in droves.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay. So I'm just wondering, John, what is the likelihood to, in order to have something hit the now, that we could hire someone that has, doesn't need to go to the academy?
Phil's out in a tough time not finding, finding people that are post-certified right now. So he's got two openings. He can't find post-certified officers. So I can't speak to that.
Because that would give us the most benefit, right? Is to find someone post-certified so they could...
It would, but the chances are you're gonna limit your scope extremely narrow because that's all Phil is doing. He's been open for eight months and hasn't found anybody.
Okay. So officers are not leaving in droves and readily available.
Yeah, you have somebody ready to do all this, right?
Potentially, yeah. He's a reserve right now.
When did he become a reserve?
About three weeks ago is when he, his background came back and we got everything done with him.
So bear in mind, we're two in the bush, I would think.
What's the shortest length of time of getting somebody post-certified? Well, if the academy has an opening in three months, you can get a post-certified in three months. But the problem is, is the academy's still backed up right now because it's the only one in the state. The state runs it. We have to go on the waiting list. So I called in April's, as quick as I can get in, for another officer. But they can, once they're done with field training, they are permitted to go out by themselves, pending the post-certification because they're, they're post-certified pending going to the academy, essentially.
Okay, any other public comment? John?
Commissioner.
Or not, commissioner comment, sorry.
I don't know what all the talk is about. However, if they want to use some of the funds to get this officer started, that's fine. John has stated that he knows that there's a possibility that that new officer, if he, you know, is offered here, he might not be able to retain him. But John has also said, quote, "That's on him." He will figure out the way to get the money to pay for the officer. And I don't really feel that there's anybody in this room that would have any regret about paying a mill levy to have an officer. You pay seventy-five dollars a year as a property owner... Yeah, careful. For, for infrastructure for the streets. Thirty-five for a, a lotto. And that money's being used really wisely on tar and chipping and doing the black topics. It takes time. But I don't think anybody would have a problem putting a mill levy in to retain our police department at full strength. Period.
Correct.
James, do you have a comment on this about using funds that are allocated for future on hiring a position? At all? No? Yes? Can I consult with my attorney, James?
What, what exactly is the question?
Using one-time ARPA funds to start a position, well, not start a position, but fund a position that won't have funding next year. Is that...
Where, where do your ARPA funds come from?
The federal government.
It's...
And what are the specifics?
We've found a lot of different specifics. That's why it's really hard to decide on this.
Yeah. I would, I would have to review.
That's, I've tried and...
And see if there are limitations. Are there specific limitations?
I worry about...
I can give you the stuff that's back in my office, Jim, but it is, it is a lot for law enforcement to hire. We had a hundred percent murder increase last year. That's one of the things that fits right in that category that allows for additional officers to be hired. Now, I will follow up and verify what Chief Moore just told me. But I will tell you this, in having worked with you for what, six years? Yep. He knows this stuff so well that it's almost redundant to check up on his work. I rely on his reports. I rely on his feedback, his input, not just on policing matters, but on a lot of matters here in the town. Because he knows the town, he knows your, he knows your commission, he knows the residents, he knows the school. He's not just a school resource officer. I know him as an essential resource, as your town attorney. And I'll tell you this, I mean, I was a deputy county attorney in Calton County. I worked with state troopers. I worked with the sheriff's department. I worked with the Bozeman Police. And I've read a lot of reports, detective reports. And you have one of the finest officers I've ever worked with. And you should all, all be very proud. proud of him. I don't, I don't know what else to tell you. I mean, if I didn't feel that way, I probably wouldn't be your town attorney because I have to work with him. And I have to, I have to prosecute and prove beyond reasonable doubt. And there's no doubt when he brings cases to me. So.
That speaks volumes.
So if you want me to look at the grant language, I'd be happy to do that.
We have to vote tonight.
Any other commissioner comment?
I'd like to rebut something. I know it's not.
No, I'm sorry, we're not doing public comment right now. Sorry. Okay, then with no other commissioner comments, we need to call the vote. Where are we at, Chris? You were helping me keep track of that.
I think we're at, yeah, I'm not sure.
That'll work, that's fine.
Because I pointed out him last time, right? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. And now she passes. Okay, let's move on to resolution five sixty dash two zero two one.
I move to approve resolution five sixty dash two zero two one, a resolution adopting and improving wages for the listed employees of the town of Ennis for fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two.
Second. Okay, discussion.
I'd like to point out that there is a major disparity wage gap between town employee, some town employees. There's a.
Could you please speak up?
Yep, there is a significant disparity in the wages specifically with the library staff. Last year or two years ago, we worked really hard to increase public works wages as well. I would like to see that dedication handed to the library. I don't know if Karen's on and can talk about the sort of higations and qualifications of the library staff, but currently the library staff, they're, one of their employees is.
That's disheartening.
Is working for eleven dollars and sixty seven cents an hour. And so I would just like to, I'm proud that our other employees make good wages and I would like to bring the library staff up to good wages too. Because currently, there's probably at least by any other departments, lowest paid person is seventeen dollars an hour. And so there is a huge gap in there and I would like to see, and that doesn't count that the library significantly, the Friends of the Library raises thirty thousand dollars every year to help fund books. One of the biggest things for, you know, so Officer John Morris, job isn't harder is that preventative and stuff in our programs and stuff like that. And our library does a tremendous job. They had three hundred and eighty-one participants through the programming and that, just this month alone. And so I would just really like the council to work to find those wages be higher as well.
I think I have to second what she says. I think we almost need to move our starting position up to seventeen dollars for town employees. That's what we did with the public works. I think the library is as important as every other department inherent with what Lisa said. And I'm sure Karen could second.
That.
And back up everything that we've said that way.
Corey.
The, the last livable wage that I've ever heard was, I think, a representative from the Democratic Party came in and said, I believe it was nineteen fifty an hour for someone who's just renting and I believe twenty, twenty-one fifty or twenty-two fifty for someone who's trying to purchase a home. So just something that, that we should consider finding what a livable wage is in the town of Ennis.
I don't disagree with what you're saying. The thing with this as well is when we get great employees and we have a lot of great employees that work there, we need to make sure that we are able to pay them so they stay with us and don't leave for other opportunities. And that's a big deal with that. As far as that goes, it's something we need to consider. I think what I would like to do, and you guys can agree, disagree, is go ahead and vote on this resolution and then set up a, another, in our October meeting probably, way we're going, plan one on the third week of September too, but a meeting in October where we actually adjust these wages.
Well, I think with the library, they're a little bit different. So they're, and John would know, John's on the library board is, and maybe, actually, Karen, can you speak to that?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm here. Can, am I, am I on?
Yes.
Okay. So I heard a couple of different questions here. One, and please, please ask away, let me know if I'm answering your questions. I heard a couple of different things here. One is about certifications. So, you know, based on the last two, three, four years of conversations about library salaries, you know, we tried to base increases on certification similar to public works. You know, that, that extra education makes your position more valuable and as a greater service to the community. So our certifications are library-specific categories through the state of Montana based on library administration, services to the public, collection management, technical services and technology. And I do, yeah, and we can talk about, I'd love to talk about it in a work session and explain it more. Yeah, as far as a, and as far as increasing library wages, you know, we've been trying to do that gently as not to, a blow to anyone's budget. But you know, we are in the same boat as everyone else. If you have a valued employee, we want them to stay for the benefit of the town and our community. We do have updated job descriptions that we can match, you know, as far as, you know, if you want them on job description wage basis and, you know, as, and based on a livable wage, however you want to talk about this, I'd be super happy to. And as far as libraries, yes, we are a little different than the rest of the budgets. Yet, yes and no. We are different in that in Montana code annotated, libraries are treated a little bit differently in that the library board is in charge of setting salaries. I can just, so, let me find the right one here. So in twenty-two dash one dash three ten, it talks about chief librarian personnel and compensation. And in the case notes, the language grants the library board of trustees, the authority determined salaries and compensation. However, because we are under the municipality umbrella, we are also fiscally responsible to the town of Ennis. So, you know, there's kind of a, there's a double-edged sword going on and I would, yeah, I'd love to talk about that some more.
Okay, yeah, so if we can figure out that between the library board and the town, that would be great.
And I also, sorry, I also would just appreciate this conversation tremendously.
So what essentially would happen is this would go to the library board to start with.
Yes.
And they would decide on what they would want, then they would bring the amount back to us and then we would discuss the amount.
Well, that's true, as, as well as how it fits into the town allocation. You know, we're, we're not so independent or, or have I the desire to work independently? I want to work with the town, with our community and what's best for, what's best for the budget and being fiscally responsible because we take that very seriously.
And we appreciate that. And I think we had a little disconnect at the last meeting because I was a little frustrated. I didn't quite understand what you were looking for and I mentioned this to you. It's a lot easier when we can see it right there in black and white and know exactly what we're driving for.
Okay.
So let's go ahead and start that process with you and your library board and then we will have the discussion amongst the commission at our next meeting.
Fantastic.
That will give you enough time to get the information, yes?
Yep, that sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. So would we need to go through and find the funding and the budget, do a budget amendment? Or?
We'll discuss that when we go into the October meeting, after we've made sure that the library board approves what they're doing.
So right, I mean, right now, just, just for what, on the, the present resolution?
We would vote on this.
The library board did approve those wages because Karen sent that up when they're last meeting.
Okay, but then as.
But then as you move forward, yeah, if you're ready to discuss it, then.
Very similar to how we do it with public. We just made the adjustment.
Yeah, I think maybe a little different, but.
A little bit different, but.
Same idea.
Yes, definitely. So then we would vote on this resolution as is and then do the adjustment after the library board comes back at us. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay, any other discussion on this resolution? Okay, with that, we'll call to vote, Lisa.
Aye.
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 Okay, we'll go to Brittany next on the email and ACH.
This is a hot topic, really.
Can you sign me up for that too, by the way?
Yes. Just for the discount.
I don't need the discount, just to be honest, so I don't have to come in and drop this shit.
So I emailed all of you with my proposal, but I guess potentially we just need to talk about it and hopefully vote on it tonight. I propose that there is a discount offered to any citizen that has a water bill or signing up for email billing and automatic payments. Some people might not want automatic payment but want email, so I do think they should be separate discounts. And I, I'm not sure on the amount. It's been thrown out like twenty bucks off of your future bill and just one time. Just an incentive to, to cut time off of me mailing five hundred and something cards in the mail. And everyone, you know, pays their bill on the same time. It cuts down on me processing checks, going to the bank because often it's time-consuming to get checks and send bills. So I think, I did the math, in one year's time, you'd make up the money if you offered a ten dollar discount for email and then ten dollar discount for ACH. Obviously you could go bigger, but I think there needs to be an incentive and a push to get people to sign up because they don't even know we offer it.
I didn't know you offered it. I hate that little card.
Yeah.
And I always.
Any mail.
Where the hell did that thing go when I'm dropping it off? So yeah, if I can all pay, sign me up.
Yeah, I think it's good, in emails, well, I guess, because I know like we would put little, I'm all for it. I think it's a great idea, but you know, we would put dog tags, we're due on the bottom. I wonder if in emails or if, I think just overall, we need to come up with a better way to communicate with our residents. And so, and I guess if they sign up for email, then we would have their emails to communicate with them as well.
Yeah, and I'm wondering, would we, like, if we're with them, do you still have the option of putting some form of a note on there? I think, I think you can do that with the emails.
Yeah. And, and I think Black House ways where you can design the emails to look.
Friendly.
Pretty.
Yeah, okay. Okay, very cool.
I think, I would just like you guys to decide on an amount tonight so we can look forward and I can.
We'll have to, because we've got to do a resolution to.
Right, but I want the, yeah, so that she can start designing.
Yeah, I think twenty and ten is perfect.
I was thinking ten, well, yeah, twenty and ten, do you think that's, or ten and ten? So if you sign up for both, then you get a twenty dollar discount.
To get emails?
So to get emails and then if you sign up for the automatic payments, then you get an additional.
Gotcha. I thought it was going to be twenty if you did ACH and then you can pay through email, right?
All right, now.
No, no PayPal or anything, right?
Not yet.
Why don't we take a bitcoin? Okay.
Working on it.
Yeah.
So are you thinking ten and ten being twenty?
Yeah. I, I think any, I mean, I think people will do it for free.
So you're going to send me the bill and email.
An incentive, yeah, more people will sign up.
And I can print it out and, and pay out.
Yeah. Well, and, hey, our, and our, and ACH is an automatic deduction from your bank account.
Yeah, that's okay with me.
Okay. I just want to be clear.
The worst I have to worry about, I mean, it's, the water bill is the same every damn month. I can program it.
I'll give you mine for that.
I don't water my lawn.
So yeah, that sounds good.
So to be clear, it would be a one-time discount, not a recurring.
Yeah, this one, yeah, this one, just the initial time. And do we put a deadline on it? So to incur.
I don't think so because I think we should offer it to all future accounts as well.
Well, just say, of course, for new accounts, but just to kind of, well, okay, just to say to push people to really do it by end of the year, you get this discount.
And then one question I would ask is, does it affect summer residents as well that shut off the water each time or would that just be the one?
I still get a bill when I show.
Yeah, you still get your water.
But you get the base rate.
I get the base rate.
So when they come out.
Yeah, and the post office doesn't load that card. It's always lost in the mail.
It's just like a guessing game. Well, you know how much it is.
It's forty-seven dollars a change this month that I set it off. So I just send a check of fifty bucks.
Okay, everybody, do you have any information?
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone have any other questions?
Thank you, Brittany.
Thank you, Brittany, for getting that.
All of you did.
Good job, Brittany.
Good job, Brittany.
She's not coming back.
The rest will be greater. It's negative.
Okay, we're going to start with the north forty parking.
All right, that's pretty self-explanatory, these recommendations to place some parking restrictions in the north forty. Came from Chief Moore, who has had, you know, issues with access, emergency access. His road is not sufficient, wide, it wasn't really designed for on-street parking. And so, you know, there are people parking up there and it's not, it's not posted, there's no parking in.
Correct. It's, it's a public street, but it's only twenty-four foot width. It's the same issue we have with, with Otis Avenue and that's why that was made, no parking is if you have a car parked on one side, you can't get an emergency vehicle in there for access. So the rest of the streets up there just need to be made, no parking with the exception of the two white circles, which were going to both be one ways. You guys already decided on the one, but the one on the north side needs to be made a one-way and then parking on one side.
So do we just need to put another resolution out?
No, we.
Or just add, or another ordinance?
Yes, could be ordinance.
Have any of you driven back there with a car on the road? It is.
It's not a car on the road.
Yeah, seriously. But it's, people have been parking there and will stop and park and it is impossible.
If you have one parked on each side of the road, you can't get through.
Yeah.
And there's nothing illegal about that unfortunately because as long as they're parked up against.
So there'd be no street parking in the north forty?
It's with the exception of the two half moons that are up there.
Okay.
And those were going to be one ways so you could be parking on one side of that.
Yeah, I remember that. So what, so what streets are we exactly talking about?
Jim, you have a, it should be in your.
It just says, north forty first.
So it's, it's every street up there with the exception of Otis that's already there. So it's, you take Clark, go north of, go Clark, sorry, Pearl, north of Clark, Clark, Rachel, Albojo, Landing Lane, which is the one that's not really developed quite yet.
I think Landing Lane should be allowed parking because it's not a true street. It's just a.
I think Landing Lane should be allowed parking, because it's not a true street, it's just a dead end.
Yeah.
Right now, it's just a dead end right now, so we can leave that off for right now, that doesn't matter. And then whatever we're calling the north circle up there, I forget what we're calling that, the other one's already been decided, so I don't remember what the, if there was a name assigned for that yet or not.
This was actually, um, addressed in February.
February, I brought it to your attention.
It is a monthly report.
Yep, yep.
And it was, and I had it as attachment to an email that was sent out.
I don't get emails from you.
No, I don't, because.
No, I don't get emails from you, I don't get any semi-trucks, I don't get that.
I also think we should put some, or not allow semi-trucks to go back there, put a sign that says no vehicles or something like that.
Weight limit?
I don't have a scale on not waiting vehicles. Um, none of the other public streets in town are restricted for weight limits, um, we've never had a problem with trucks back there, and delivery trucks are permitted. So in state law, delivery truck, truck making a delivery, a semi or anything is still permitted. So I, I mean, I don't see what, what it's gonna matter restricting the semi from going back there for, um, because most of the ones I see back there are doing lumber deliveries or doing deliveries of equipment to the sites.
I just see the tight turning radiuses and, like, no way a semi can make that.
I watch them do North Forty, North Forty roundabout all the time.
Yep.
No, no issues with getting up on the curb at all?
Yes.
Not for a good driver, they don't.
Every single part of it has been drove up. The sign, I've been murdered, that place got really bad.
Yep. Alright, well, maybe that's not an issue, but.
We'll talk about that when we get to the, did you, okay, let's go ahead and move to the noise ordinance.
Oh, right here. No, I was gonna, uh, I don't know if you, if this stuff got into your packet or not, and it's, it's for discussion only, so I was about to make you copies, but I'll just, alright. So basically, what you have in your current, um, town code are certain performance standards that allow, you know, things about lighting, screening, trash, garbage, and noise, you know, these, these are part of your, you know, town code, try to keep things peaceful and quiet and preserve the character of your community. Well, again, Chief Moore brought to my attention that it's virtually impossible to enforce the noise ordinance because it requires measurement of decibels with a circling meter, the certified meter.
Which means it would have to be calibrated monthly, which means you're spending a lot of money for a certified decibel meter.
How would I put that in?
Well, that was just back, that was before you had an app on your smartphone, that's okay.
But that's not certified, that's the problem.
No, 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 I'm saying that's before, that they had to use, they have to have some kind of regulation, because it gets challenged, and so that's why it's written that way. It's not because, yeah, so, but yeah, there, so did you come up with a solution?
Right, we did, but I just thought that everybody would enjoy to hear the script of language, because it's, at this point in a hearing, you need to have something to laugh at, I mean, and octave band analyzer conforming to standards prescribed by the American Standards Association is published in pamphlets numbers twenty-two, four point three, published in nineteen forty-four, nineteen fifty-three.
I think that was just an executive order that overrode that.
Now, if anybody has that, please come forward. So what we did was, uh, contacted, you know, some of our other towns and city attorneys and, city of Bozeman, kind of worked this out, and, um, interestingly enough, no town attorney has had any of their ordinances challenged per constitutionality in, uh, you know, up to the amount of time it's been worked with. If we need to, we have a proposal, proposal language that's being distributed to you momentarily.
Then you know that.
And, uh, basically, it allows you to enforce what's called a loud, raucous noise or disturbance, and then it's, it's more subjective than going with a publication from nineteen forty-four, which we can't seem to locate anywhere. So that's, you know, again, it's for discussion purposes, it's the main ordinance, uh, adoption, you'd have to publish it according to, you know, the proper standards.
Can I, just for a discussion period, I mean, I know it would, you have to do all those other things, uh, loud raucous, so just to give you an example, our neighbor called the sheriff's office or dispatch at the, uh, time for watching Star Wars outside, and it was like at eight-thirty. Does this set, um, like, certain times?
Yes, there are times in there, you have to go through, and I don't remember specifically what they are, but they vary between winter and summer, um, it's essentially Bozeman's, but with the references to the rest of Bozeman's stuff removed.
Gotcha.
And cleaned up to fit the rest of our ordinances. Um, it would be enforceable, but keep in mind, the sheriff's department does not enforce nor is ordinances, so it would only be enforceable.
Yeah, no, he didn't say anything anyway, it was just that they had called and said, you know, like, you know, and so I was just wondering, he's like, I, he's like, can I come back and watch with you? Like, because it was Star Wars, like, everybody wants to watch Star Wars, he's like, I couldn't even hear it from the street, so I'm just trying to get, you know.
Well, I know it's not public comment, but I'm glad you said that, because it's kind of like you said earlier, with the zoning requirement, so if you leave or stuff like set items and stuff, makes me think like, you know, if we don't have a set decibel amount, but then someone calls up, someone watches Star Wars, I mean, is it only a noise violation, like, how do you decide what actually is a noise violation in this, only if they get a call on that, or if John Moore drives by and gals, or?
I think that's a great question, and I think it depends on which, if you're watching original Star Wars. But if you're watching my story, you know, it's just like with the time.
No, well, like, if you've got, you know, obviously somebody fighting out their front yard or something, like, on Fourth of July, you have to get a call, but if you've got, you know.
So, again, I mean, we get, we get back to, you get back, and this is, you know, this is like the question that you can see when we're getting off with legislation, uh, whether it's zoning or criminal, what's reckless driving, you know, you know, what's, uh, you know.
Okay, so I guess.
Endangering somebody's life with a motor vehicle, how do you know? Well, you know, officers are trained to make observations, and then they, they go out and they say, okay, you know, you're spinning your tires and you wrecked somebody else or came real close to somebody, you know, you could have caused a loss of life or one, so he writes the ticket. Now, you agree with it, you plead guilty, you don't, you go in front of a jury and you let them decide. But, you know, the idea that we're going to craft code that solves everything, it's like, then, I mean, you might as well just go to Congress and have them write you a health care code, right, that's, you know, twenty thousand pages in there, you don't know what's in it until we pass it.
Sure, okay, yeah, no, okay, so, okay, so, um, just, uh, so on this, for example, just 'cause, you know, let's Google today, where are we here, um, uh, like, if they needed a temporary use permit, so if someone was doing, I see outdoor events on here, but if someone was doing a special.
What's in there?
Something, I mean, it does say, it does say outdoor events and it does give a time thing, would there be, so, um, but if they required a, um, permit, could they override this with a temporary use permit?
Yeah, if the temporary use permit is approved, yes, that would be included in the temporary use, if they wanted to have ban that play till midnight.
Yeah.
And the temporary use was granted, yes, they would override that.
Okay, I think maybe this is gonna be required, just more information for some of our establishments in town too, so they're not blindsided, so, to get, I mean, just so they said, hey, you know, this is coming up, I know we have two public hearings and, you know, stuff like that, but. And some of it, it's, some of it is quiet. It just depends on the act, because there's some music you don't, I don't hear at my house, and then there's other music that I can sing along with, because, you know, because it's so loud. So I think that's just where it kind of finds, and I just want, I don't want them, or any of the establishments to be, um, just to know if they want something that's gonna go later or whatever, that they need a temporary use permit.
Commissioner Roberts, I'm speaking in a special voice.
Not very good, no. Yeah, exactly, so, okay, thank you for working on this, okay.
Should road repair bond issue.
Okay, so I'm really, was kind of confused, I didn't really understand what that was all about, but, uh, again, there's nothing being proposed right now, and from what I understand, you have your building permit process, you, uh, it has like just some small language on the bottom, bond, five hundred dollars if it's commercial, two hundred and fifty dollars if it's residential, yet it doesn't really explain.
Anything.
How that's posted, is it cash, check, is it a performance bond, it doesn't state, you know,
I.
how much can be retained, and seriously, I, I think that if that's what you're trying to do, is create, uh, you know, a bond to protect the town in the event that there are damages to your roads that need to be repaired, as opposed to it's not an impact fee, and I don't know what impact fees you have for that purpose.
We don't have any.
So it's kind of, it's.
I thought you were redoing all those sheets.
I was doing what?
Redoing all those sheets, the applications, all.
You thought I was working on all of them?
All of them.
I don't think I was tasked with that.
Yeah, so.
Is that why you have several?
They can look at some stuff too. I think it's gonna, you know, they can do stuff and then it's gonna have to come to you for review.
Well, anyway, by bringing the bond issue to me, it made me think that you probably might want to consider an impact fee. In addition to the performance bond, see, now you could also have a performance bond just for completing a project as well, I mean, what do you do if somebody comes in, does commercial development, and they just, you know, bankrupt, decide they're not gonna complete it, and you got like some steel structure or some structure that's unfinished, what, what do you do? Well, that's, that's where.
That's where your performance bond comes in.
You know, that's where performance bonds come in, for that, that sort of thing. Now, the, the road bond is a different issue, that's, that's kind of like a repair, so if during the process, you know, they tear up your roads, um.
And that's the problem, they're not fixing them.
Yeah, North Forty a lot of stuff, yeah.
And if that's, uh, occurring at, with sufficient frequency where you need to address it, then you do so through legislation and revising your forms that would then follow that.
Hence, that's why we, yeah, yeah.
And then, so then you have the performance bond, the impact fee, and the road repair bond. So there are three separate items, and they should be looked at independently. You, town commissioners, are the legislative body, you create the policy and you create the code. And, uh, I can only advise you and, you know, give you suggestions along the way.
So what is your suggestion?
My suggestion is that you look into that further, and, I mean, first thing I would do is ask Public Works Director, you know, what type of damages have we seen from projects that are going on?
That's where this all is.
That's where it started, that's where it started.
Okay, so then, does he think that five hundred dollars is adequate?
No.
No, he does not, that's why, yeah, he does not, and that's why we were, when we looked into, Brittany sent what, you know, Bozeman has and stuff like that, and that's what we kind of, we want something along those lines, and that's what we were hoping that you would look into for us, because we can't write that type of language, because we're not an attorney.
So, I guess the next step would be, we need to go out, I'll do some further inquiries, and look at, you know, whether jumping poles in Allison County for that.
Or three ports, maybe two that's smaller, I don't know, just big, I don't think three ports has as much growth in city.
Yeah, there are a lot in the county.
So Bozeman's probably.
And a performance bond isn't a bad idea, I mean, that would, performance bond would ensure that projects stay on a timeline, that.
It ensures that it's gonna be completed.
Totally, okay, so it doesn't matter how long it takes.
I think.
Now, generally speaking, I mean, whether you create this process for the development that's about to happen in the future, but I can tell you this, I mean, if you as a municipality were to hire somebody to go do the work, you know, like, let's say you're expanding the town hall, building a project, you're all, you absolutely would have all of those protections in there. So whether you want to extend that same type of policy to other types of development that take place, where you're not hiring that directly, but you're approving a project, something to consider.
Separate conditional use type permit projects, like the bigger projects, not just like a residential house?
Yeah.
But that's where we had the problem, over here was more like just even the residential, because they had to cut in to get water and sewer.
So, you know.
It's like every.
Might not want, might not perform respond when somebody's coming in here to build their own house, right?
I think there's, gotta penetrate the street.
Yeah.
To hook up the utilities, now they are adding a cost to the city to repair it.
Right, so you need something to secure that.
Yeah.
If they don't do it themselves.
The performance bond is essentially an insurance policy that they're, that it's going to get done. They either, the bond company comes in.
Could you change that price depending on like square footage or size of project?
Sure.
So that it's adequate, we're not charging the same bond for residential houses versus like the school.
That's what Bozeman does.
Yeah, because it's the size, it's the cut that you're making into, because even a residential house could potentially, you know, depending on the contractor.
One of the problems we had was, and this is why I thought we should just charge one flat fee and then IP, make sure that they want to, they're motivated to get it fixed, is you don't know how big of a cut they're gonna make, they can make, just depending on who's.
Oh, tell after, it doesn't matter this morning, it doesn't matter anything, okay.
And you can attest to that.
So, just so you know, there's seven more cutouts that need to be done, so that road's just starting to get bad. So, it's.
And these.
But the homeowner or builder isn't gonna pay the full cost to have it done, they're gonna pay an insurance premium to secure the bond that guarantees that it's done.
So then we have a recourse right there, we have a recourse.
And it has a sign that they put on it, and you perfect the bond if you don't have that.
And this will have to go to readings and public hearings and everything, if we change that neighborhood.
Well, yeah, um, I think that you're able to set amounts by resolution.
So we can just change the amount right now and then work on a ordinance? Not right now, but it, through resolution, we could set.
It's, we did, it's not, the, the amount is not set in ordinance, so it's gonna have to be set by resolution, so it can't be set up by resolution.
So right now, if the, however much money is not adequate at this time, we can do that, and then we can work towards an ordinance, which is gonna take.
And my suggestion, right, would be you up that amount.
Yeah, for right now.
In my opinion astronomically, because my poor car does not like driving down Otis Avenue. And you don't want to short yourself.
Yeah, if we have to take that, okay.
So we go crazy, like fifty, a hundred thousand?
Eric, what, what, Eric, what do you think?
Yes. My suggestion is to do asphalt and fix stuff, it's a lot of money.
Eric, what would cost it roughly?
I honestly, I don't know.
Okay, because I mean, you'd have to bring down the asphalt company down for a special trip, you gotta redo the whole road, you know, it's not like they're down here already, so I mean, it's.
And they have to compact it, they have to do other things.
Walk away and get the five thousand.
I was.
That's what I'm saying, thirty-five thousand.
In my humble opinion, I would say fifteen to twenty thousand dollars if they have to cut into the street like that, that, that's just, that's just my opinion right now, but.
Why don't we, why don't we get some data on that and figure out?
So maybe though, on the September sixteenth meeting, we at least change the number by resolution on this, so we don't get screwed in.
I can, I can work on numbers for you.
So go ahead and set that for October.
For lump cut.
Or September, or a special meeting.
Cur, curvand, yeah, it's.
The problem without.
I know, but how long is it gonna be to set?
You have to dig the holes wide.
So when people need information.
Okay, okay.
So do we have Jim start you, what's the timeline for you to rewrite that section of the?
We changed that?
The form, yeah.
Or, I think the form is pretty.
Let's just get the resolution through and then we'll work on that.
We'll work on the amount first. I guess in the meantime, he could be working on the ordinance, yeah.
The way I would handle it, on the first form, I would say bond, see attached, then we just have another form.
Because I think that if we just raise the bond amount a lot on the form that is right now, people are gonna go, what?
And we need, we need to add a further explanation.
So I think that we do like a whole attachment. You got that. You got that.
So it would be something that is kicked over to public works, but it still could be a form attached with your, okay. That's a good idea then have it, cuz currently it's not on, cuz she started using the one that was in the book. After we had discovered the issues with the other one, but that's not on there at all. Unless if that's something we adjust or just have a separate form, I think that at this point in time, just have a separate form. Go ahead and move on. That's fine, that's just. Based out, that's the number we'll call it.
Yeah, I can get the notes tomorrow.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the library report.
Karen, are you still there?
I'm here, I am here. I had to find the right button. Uh, I will make this really brief, it's super close to my bedtime. Um, so you have my report, but I just want to share a couple of things, um. So I included our two thousand twenty-one public library standards, um, they're there just in case you want to cruise our standards. Um, public library standards are defined in the administrative rules of Montana, but we use them for benchmarks for library services like collection development planning. Um, finance facilities, so, and they have different benchmark levels, um, essential, enhanced and excellent. And every library has to meet the essential standards in order to receive state aid. Ours, which is based on city limit population, is a whopping six hundred bucks and, um, but, but more so here at Madison Valley Public Library. We use the standards to set a bar for excellent services and as a measure to improve our, our services to the community. So if you have any questions on those, please let me know or ask a board member. Um, and the other thing I just wanted to share with you is just some stats on our summer reading program and they should be also included. Um, in your packet and I just wanna throw out a, a lot of thanks to our program sponsors and partners. Um, without them, we could not do it and, um, those will be listed on our library website and we'll throw it out on social and send some thank yous out. But I'm super proud of the kids and grateful to parents that took the time to bring their kids in for that reading, that lifelong learning investment of reading. They logged over a hundred and eighteen thousand minutes this summer, um, for just Friday programs, uh, four hundred kids and parents came, came in. Um, three hundred and thirty reading logs were turned in and books checked out just during summer reading program, which is about six weeks, was three thousand five hundred and seventy. So all in all, a super successful program and again, I can't thank our partners enough and our employee Bailey Gibson for spearheading most of these efforts. Um, and with that, do you guys have any questions for me?
No, thanks.
Uh, no, great job Karen and staff.
Thank you guys.
Thanks for staying up.
Y'all gotta copy my written report, any questions?
What is the co-grad, like a, like a text thing that?
It's a text or a phone call or both to your phone for the county. That's how we get emergency notifications out. We had the calf that moved down on, uh, um, the school grounds on the, we put out a notification just to everybody to let them know that they're out and around. Because we couldn't tranquilize the calf because it's too young, so we just gotta let it go around, so we just wanna let everybody know, um, it's way to get. The town has access to it through dispatch, um, dispatch uses it to announce road closures, um, if something's happening in the area. Um, so it's a good thing to sign up for, um, they don't spam you, they don't do anything with it, um, and then they can also do what's called geo fencing. So if we just want a specific area notified, um, they can send it to just those cell phone towers and just those people in that area also.
Looks like, kinda like a Amber Alert type of situation.
Sort of, but, um, much more specific and we can do, we can do anything with it. Uh, we, it's not just an Amber Alert, so it's, we can do any sort of notification with it whatsoever.
Well, thank you, Chief Moore.
Thank you guys for approving the budget, it, we will make it work, don't worry and like I said, it's on me, so it will work.
Any other questions?
Everybody wound up.
Yeah.
Amazing, along with our day-to-day activities. We started, I started, Kyle and I have started, sewer inspection, kind of would like to be done before winter.
Do you have to run every line?
Yeah. Yes, I really need to know where we're at. I don't think it's a bad thing anyways, but. And working on the bar motors, spend the day in that hot one and maybe Bill just be really busy.
Appreciate you guys, does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Eric. Did you get, or I guess, did you hire a third person?
I, I'm asking John the background, see if we can get him checked out. I had somebody bite me, that's all.
Well, sweet, that hates.
Somebody bit me.
Okay, well, sweet, that is.
What is that position, hey?
Seventeen. Uh, starts at seventeen.
Boa certification, it goes up.
With nineteen and twenty-four.
Right.
Any other questions there? Zoning report. Any questions for Suzie?
No. I just, I, just the one comment Suzie and I don't even know where it's at. Right, did you steal my packet? Is that why it comes behind it? Well, it's just that, just the last sentence said it's, they are the first project that, that's been held up to zoning standards and I, I don't think that that's true, cuz we just.
Well, I, the projects that I researched, we found, um, nothing that gave us guidelines on how to proceed.
Yeah, and maybe it needs to be.
Gonna hire themselves out to do all the T and D for anybody in town.
Just tell them to call me.
Yeah.
It's a very difficult process to go through.
Sure, it is.
And that's what Alex been dealing with, like with everything, is it's not easy, it's.
Every time they thought they had something, um, I would have to come back and say, no, I didn't know, um, I mean, I knew, I didn't have the knowledge to guide them in the right direction.
Yeah.
And I'm willing to accept that, but between Alex and Cushing and Terrell, I think we're there and I think they have an excellent project and, um, they've done a really hard work on putting this together, so.
Well, that's, I just, yeah, just maybe in the, it's for the T and D, cuz other projects have, have been held to zoning standards, yeah. So, and maybe that can be an amendment.
As much as, um, some permits on a napkin basically and approved in one meeting basically across the street, the blue, I mean, there was nothing, absolutely nothing.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, I, I researched the, that one, um, finished the coffee shop. I don't know if you remember, it's written in your file, but I did five of them, nothing to go off of.
Yeah, well, and I think that's why we're at this process, I think for a long time it had, had been and that is what our goal is. With new employee and hiring Cushing, Terrell is to get us to what our book says and get us to the, our standards and then.
Thing, for sure.
And then adjust them. And so, and I appreciate you putting that up. I know you walked into the lion's den in this position and I appreciate the effort that you've put towards it. And so I'm just hoping we can get it so it's more user friendly, so the public knows, so everyone knows what the expectation is. It's not lost on, you know, page twenty-seven of some code that we don't, I mean, that is the true, and that was the goal when we embarked on it four years ago. It just never got past that third page because people heard zoning and lost their minds and then, and so. Um, so I'm hoping that this time around, it will be a lot easier to know that this is any updates that happen, you know, they're for the benefit of the community. So it's easy for them to know what is expected, so, and then we can come to an agreement on, um, yeah, standards for our community.
Any other questions?
Oh, I guess, why were the fence permits denied?
Why are they denied? I wasn't gonna ask, I really.
Fence permits, um, actually, they wanted to fence on the south side of the property, it's actually the alley that runs behind Willie's.
Yeah.
And they wanted this to fence on the south side, so basically they could use the alley, the sixteen feet as part of their property instead of fencing on the south side.
Oh, gotcha.
Unless Willie puts in for.
Your job.
Gotcha, gotcha.
You didn't let Tim back on that?
Um, yes.
Okay.
I love my job.
Lot of fun.
Well, thank you.
Okay, Suzie, when you see a setback like this on that helpful year review process?
Are those Willie's?
Yeah.
Yes.
Usually, I actually wanted to say thank you to Willie's for putting in the effort and these things are awesome. And it just shows that the T and D can work.
If you figure it out.
Figure it out enough, but, uh, uh, yeah, this is amazing, thank you, yep.
Most, most of what you're going through those report are just from a force.
Yeah.
A lot of the T and D's.
Yeah, and tha, and that's where the, that's where the disparity is, is that there's no other standards.
They all refer to.
They all refer to T and D.
That's the overlay.
That's the overlay, but even in like commercial standards, there are no, I mean, there's the setbacks, but there's no design guidelines too. So, and that's where that, you know, the lofty language is to work on that, so, anyway. All right, thank you Suzie.
Sort of report?
I did not get a written one done, um.
You had a lot of stuff to do.
But, um, just along with the regular duties of the, the lion chair of my time, you just take it like that. That's it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we wanna try to keep the shorts, we were a bit late in here. Uh, the first thing I would like to talk about is I'd like to thank the council, this has been a rough month, especially with this budget, you guys have done a great job. Asked the question, I wish everyone had left, so if you could have said this in front of everyone, but, uh, you've asked the questions and it's a little disappointing as to how the public has reacted to some of the people. It's, uh, kinda sad that we can't have a conversation, we need to be able to have a conversation, people can be passionate about it. And the people threatening people is ridiculous, quite honest, and we need to have a open conversation and not, uh, an attack. And I appreciate the effort you guys have put into this, I mean, it did, it does take a lot that way. And then with, uh, as far as the budget going, I, I hear what you guys have been saying and thus I had reached out to Jason as he had said to help with along John. And as Jim needs to help as well, I appreciate, uh, the mill levy process, so we can get that going as quickly as possible. And have that, and John will work in, I talked with Golden, work in coordination. Also like to, and I just talked with Cory a little bit about this, but start gathering the information for the resort tax. We've got a great resource in Mayor Gatewood over in Virginia City who went through this process and can help us with it. We also have their ordinance and it's something that we need to really start working at to help fund projects in this town. I know it's a ugly word a lot of the time, but some of the failures that they have before were not knowing where the money was gonna be. And only Mr. Bancroft was here when that happened, but that was a big, uh, thing and we need to really address that and we will attack it in a proper way. But it's things that can help the police if we're not able to, or we can put it to infrastructure, there's so many different things that we can put it towards. And I look forward to that. Then one other thing, I keep seeing out online and I most generally tend not to pay attention to this, but I'm gonna mention it again. We did not sue the steers, the steers sued the town of Anis and we are defending public land. That is something that needs to go out there, it continues to be said and I wanna, it's public record for people to see anything. You know, John can get it for you, Jim's got it, we've got the information out there, I just wanted to address that one very specifically. We did not sue them, they sued us, we are defending that, so when people are saying we're frivolously wasting money on that, we're actually defending town property and alleys that way. So you can disagree with what we're doing, that's fine, but at least have your back straight when you're doing it. And then my last thing is, I, I'm sorry, I forget the name, the IT company that would like to. Do a, they'll do a free, sorry, I'm, it's late here, I'm getting a, a free estimate, estimate, thank you, of our total IT services. And they will come in and look at it and do a free one, we just have to let them in and have access, they actually have other municipal cities and I'll get the information over to you.
Free quote, or free some quote.
Quote. Yes, a free quote, that was, they will go in and look and decide and then give us a report as to how much it costs, so we can look at that and, uh.
Maybe just give us a report to say what they provide and what it costs?
Yes.
Would they do like our website and?
They could do, fine, um, the way I read it is anything that we really want.
Or do, or like.
So we'd have to have a discussion on what we want.
I'm sorry, the name for escaping me, I saw it right before I came in, I just, I just write it down, I'll send it over to you soon.
You gotta come send checks tomorrow.
Okay, so then we'll go that way. I'm gonna call it there and move on to Commissioner, um, Cory.
I, I called up a guy named Danny Beerswall, he runs the resort tax office, something, up in Big Sky. Um, and he will basically bring in a panel of individuals from Wolf Creek, Cook City, West Yellowstone, Big Sky, Gardner. Um, that will talk about resort tax and these are individuals who meet up, uh, every single year to kinda go over in depth. Like, hey, what are the big failures of your resort tax or what is, what are the struggles that these different municipalities have incurred? So it, he told me if I called in tomorrow, uh, he could have a meeting mid-October with this panel that would show up here in town and do a public, uh, a public meeting. Discussing, discussing resort tax.
Information on resort tax.
Yeah, a question, a question answer.
Answer.
Yeah.
Of how it's, how it's impacted each of those communities.
Yep.
And so this would be a public one or one for?
Publics.
Whatever you want.
Well, I think it's for, I think for the public it would be good. Well, just to see what other communities do with their money, how much do they take in?
Yeah, I think that if we do the question and ask with this committee and don't have the public there, we're gonna miss out on questions that we're not gonna have.
Yeah, that are important to the community.
That was something that we would set up elsewhere, if that's something.
Yeah, I think like at the library.
The high school gymnasium, at the library, sure.
Yeah.
Let everybody in on.
Awesome, that's really cool. Awesome, that's really cool. Quick start.
Okay, uh, I think like this week especially, I have noticed, or in my own mind, have thought more and more that we, in the beginning of me getting on here, talked about training, we never had training. And then Budget School has been blasted at me all week that we needed to go to Budget School. I think Dan Clark should come, it's, we're a year and a half in past when I got on, and we haven't done anything, I would like to see some kind of training. And I, the school asked me to be the town representative for the expansion, and I'm on the bond committee, so there is another, another plan, and I think they wanna present to us next month. I don't know if Casey's talked to you yet, but.
The only thing I've got is, uh.
Plan D.
No, I haven't gotten anything on any of that, uh, resource on the.
I can email Plan D to everybody, let me talk to Casey, I'm pretty sure he's fine with that. Um, and he does wanna present, so I'll, if, he's not gonna call you, I'll let you know for sure. But that's moving forward, it looks good, I did forward it to Wayne.
What's that, the plan?
Plan D, I think tonight.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So Cushing Terrell, too. But he wants to present to us again as a mission. Okay?
Cool. Anyone else?
Uh, in my talks with, uh, the different communities and stuff, with, and MMIA, Derek Shepherd, um, I want, it's my piece of paper. Piece of paper here, um, of what, um, you know, looking at all our da, job descriptions and stuff like that, so, um, I would like to see, they do something called like an HR audit, and so they basically help us go through all of our descriptions, uh, job descriptions, all that kind of stuff, um, and make recommendations of who, which individual department should report to who, that kinda thing, and it's, and it's all free. So it's part of MMIA, they will come down here and do all that, so, um, if we could get that on the sixteenth meeting, because he also said, I was like, what kinda lead times do you need? And he said three to five days. So if we could, you know, put that on the sixteenth meeting, um, to discuss, um, an HR audit, um, as well, um, and see to see, um, yeah, that we're being efficient and everybody's job description matches. I know some of them might be, um, out of date or whatever. So, so I would like to see that, so that was interesting, and then just talking with this, uh, several different, uh, towns across the state was really beneficial as well, um, to learn what, uh, how they handle things and, um, yeah, how they, yeah, so that we don't need to reinvent the wheel, and we can reach out to those other communities and how they do handle certain items, and they, they've been through some of these growing pains themselves, and how they've handled them, and what they've worked on.
Question, anyone else?
John, you got anything?
Oh, I do not.
Let's talk more action.
Be a doer.
I moved to approve the plans.
Oh wait, any discussion, sorry. You want a discussion, Cory?
Hi.
Hi. This is kinda high.
Hi.
She did that on purpose.
Second, John already made the motion.
Uh, oh, yeah.
Oh, to move to John. Second, I wanted to go home an hour ago.
Hi.
Hi. Can I sleep tonight, baby?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Maybe.
Did I mention on your way out, um, if you didn't notice it on your email, like, you know, planes?
There is a lot not there, I saw it because it's so small. Well, then, can we do it on the sixteenth, is that soon enough, or are you gonna get late fees on anything? Okay.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Energy levels up, everything good?
Good. Do you think anybody would notice me?
Sure don't, I really don't.
We didn't know, well, we didn't wanna know.
It's me, that's fine.
It's a little bit, and that's how long it is. Yeah, we're super psyched, but it's, uh, we're gonna get one of that now, around about three hours, every three hours or something, eat sleeper food.
There you go, you're smart, more frequently.
Just kidding.
Thank you guys, thanks Brittany.
All right, Trevor.
Oh, yeah, see you guys. You guys.
Powder chocolate, you all have this stool there?
Three, 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 three twenty-eight?
Yeah, it adds up. Thank you guys. Are you coming over?
Yeah.
Well, I can't, I'm there.
You what?
Well, yeah, I will.
Sure.
I realize you're so tall. I don't ever stand right. Yeah, I work, you guys, I guess, forever. So I was really, because I, I wanted the height, yeah, I mentioned, I wanted the height.